Yes, Mayor, we're good to go.
Excellent. Today is May 31st, 2022, of our City Council Work Session calling to order. Just notice to the public that City Council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Ms. Saltzberg, roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Also here.
Councilmember Salas.
Preston.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
All right, and this afternoon, I think I would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this time. Please stand if able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And Councilmember House, our mission statement, please.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, our land acknowledgement.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by Native descendants, border mountains sacred to Indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Brings us to Agenda Item 4, Public Participation. I'd like to have Eric Wolverton come down, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, City Staff. My name's Eric Wolverton, and I represent Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona. Right now Habitat is working with multiple land trust partners in Flagstaff to host Habitat Starter Homes. These affordable homes supporting Flagstaff's workforce will allow a family to buy in homeownership in Flagstaff with only $1,000 down payment, while providing a savings program of $10,000 in equity each and every year of homeownership. Ask yourself what opportunities present themselves if you had $30,000 in just three years, or $50,000 after only five years. This shared equity model creates self-wealth for those families who never considered they could ever own a home. Now Habitat is ready to build more starter homes with the addition of Westpac Construction as our general contractor. We have the expertise and knowledge of building entire neighborhoods in a shorter timeframe. Not only is Westpac providing 100% of their services for free to Habitat, their experience in building entire neighborhoods creates a huge savings on materials and labor. Westpac has also donated over $1.25 million in just the past four years to this Habitat here in Flagstaff. Established in 1991, Westpac pursues the art of construction while contributing knowledge, leadership, passion, commitment, and diversity to every employee, client, and project team. From small tenant improvement to large shell and master plan communities, Westpac offers a full range of pre-construction and construction services in a variety of market sectors. Westpac Construction was ranked eighth in the state of Arizona and the top general contractors for 2022 by ranking Arizona a statewide opinion poll. As I've mentioned in past council meetings, Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona in partnership with Westpac Construction and the City of Flagstaff Land Trust Program is ready now to build starter homes throughout Flagstaff. Together, let's end poverty with a view and build prosperity with a view. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 5, which is the review of draft agenda for the June 7th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Council, any current concerns, considerations? Pull up the chat box here and make sure I got the crew online. All right, I'm not seeing anything at this time, so we are ready to move right along here. We do have two proclamations, our National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Pride Month. So if, Mary, if you'd like to come up front with the council and the whole crew, that would be great, and we can get the proclamations down here. Yeah. If you all wanted to just be on the first step, I think that would be perfect.
We're just here?
Yeah, however you'd like to line up, everyone gets a nice little fancy picture.
Great, thank you.
All right. This proclamation declares that the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Flagstaff to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. In Arizona, there are 1,155 gun deaths every year. With the rate of 15.6 deaths per 100,000 people, Arizona has the 19th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Cities across the nation, including in Flagstaff, are working to end this senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. In January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. On June 3rd, 2022, to recognize the 25th birthday of Hadiah Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiah Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3rd, the first Friday in June in 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And by wearing orange on June 3rd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Paul Deasy of Flagstaff, declare the first Friday in June, June 3rd, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Mary, would you like to say a few words?
I want to, I want to thank City Council and Mayor Deasy for being a friend to all the community and community safety. And I would like to, I hope you will, the City Council and the mayor will continue to work towards the safety in all the different ways, whether it's gun violence, whether it's traffic, all the different ways that they can to keep our children safe. And I'd like to invite people here and all the people that are listening to our event on Friday, June 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:30. It'll take place at the County Courthouse lawn, and there'll be a blood drive that's going on at the same time. It starts at 3 to 7, and our event starts at 5:30. We'll have speakers. It's a family-friendly event. We want to get together and to show our support for gun violence prevention and to honor the victims and survivors of gun violence. Thank you.
Get a picture here. Hold this up there. Make sure we get the whole crew in here. We're good. It is also Pride Month. And Deb, if you'd like to come down, and yeah, the crew, then that'd be awesome. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to enhance the quality of life and preserve the values of our community, and an important part of which is embracing, respecting, and celebrating diversity. We take pride in recognizing that civil rights and human rights construct a stronger foundation for Flagstaff as an inclusive community by promoting an environment that is welcoming and accepting and respectful of the dignity of all people. Flagstaff is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQIA2S+ people in our diverse community. We observe Pride Month with raising the rainbow flag to honor the history of the LGBTQIA2S+ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. We note with alarm that across the nation, LGBTQIA2S+ persons, especially transgender persons of color, have been targeted by acts of violence, and state-level laws are being enacted denying transgender youth, athletes, healthcare, and basic civil human rights. It is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice. Celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the Flagstaff community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Hand-in-hand, we commit to continuing our efforts to make Flagstaff a community inclusive of its lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer and questioning populations. Our Two Spirit Plus and the Northern Arizona Pride Association is celebrating the annual Pride Month in June 2022, the goal of which is to create a consistent effort in supporting and fostering acceptance for the LGBTQIA2S+ community and persons. In partnership, the City of Flagstaff Commission on Diversity Awareness and Northern Arizona Pride Association recommend the designation of June 2022 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Questioning Two Spirit Plus Month, in unison with national and statewide observances. Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of City Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Questioning Two Spirit Plus Month in the City of Flagstaff in recognition of celebrating and embracing equality with compassion and respect. Thank you. And if you would like, you're welcome to say a few words if you would like.
I'm Dee Wagward, and I'm here on behalf of the Commission on Diversity Awareness. And I want to thank Mayor Deasy and the City Council for making this proclamation and for promoting the safety and inclusivity of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer citizens of our community. And I also specifically want to thank Commissioner Jean Tonner from my commission and Deb Taylor from Northern Arizona Pride for working on this proclamation. Thank you for your help with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, want to get a picture?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Nice to see you in person. All right, that brings us down to Agenda Item Number 8, the annual update for Moonshot at the Northern Arizona Center for Entrepreneurship and Technology, NACET. Got Mr. McEntire here and more of the crew.
Diana White, Mayor.
I'm Dave McEntire. I am your Community Investment Director. Thank you, Stacy. All right. Now the PowerPoint set, the mics are right. I know, everything's dialed in. As you may recall, the city has a relationship with Moonshot through service agreement and through a master lease to provide business development and business support services to help grow entrepreneurship in this community and to provide property management in the city's incubator and accelerator facilities. These facilities were built with some support from the Economic Development Administration, and the space is therefore subject to guidelines about what uses are appropriate and is focused on very specific uses and business sectors. You'll hear more about this in the presentation to come, but staff is pleased that over the past year, we have seen both occupancy and benefits to the community increase coming out of the pandemic. If you'll indulge me, a brief example of some of the success. Catalyst, a space technology company that we've spoken about with you before, came to Flagstaff in part through the Flagstaff Business Attraction Incentive. They made their first home in the business accelerator. A year later, they've used that space, they've received the services available, and they're already growing and now graduating into commercial real estate here in Flagstaff. It's exciting to see their growth and to know that the city and Moonshot were able to provide a little support to help them thrive here in our community. The intent of these facilities is for companies to get there, to scale, to grow, and eventually to move out, but to be ready to thrive here when they do. With that, I'd like to introduce Moonshot's Executive Director of the NACET Campus, Diana White, to provide their annual update, but I will remain available for questions and comments as well.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Diana White, and I am, as Dave said, the newly appointed Executive Director of Moonshot at NACET Flagstaff Campus. I've been with Moonshot in several different capacities for a few years now, starting with me being the Executive Director of the SBDC for Coquenino County. At that time, Moonshot was my partner, my sponsor, and then we moved on to Coquenino Community College. In my several roles, I ran the Chandler Innovations Incubator in Chandler, Arizona, through the COVID period, and then was pleased to be offered the position to come back up and run the Flagstaff campus. As I love Flagstaff, I still had property in Flagstaff, I'm a lumberjack, and I'm ensconced in the community. So without further ado, I'd love to present updates today for you from Moonshot. Some of these facts and datas and stats are prior to my tenure as Executive Director, but I will have answers for you if you have questions. And I'm hoping that Dave can move the slide deck along for me as I go. So if you can see on this first slide, if we're on the Moonshot landing page slide, there have been a couple of additions since probably the last time you have had an update from Moonshot. So we have our Arizona Stitch Lab, which is an incubator, a textiles incubator in Tucson, Arizona, that focuses on textiles, wearable tech, and providing greater skill sets to the workforce that works in the fabrics industry. We also have our Moonshot Satellite. This is a program that we have for other cities and townships and rural areas in Northern Arizona that need guidance, pitch competition help, mentoring from our various mentors across the Moonshot continuum. We provide those services through the Moonshot Satellite. And then the Moonshot Economic Development Tool that we are building, that is more Moonshot corporate, Scott can speak to that, but that is in the works, and we're excited about providing that service to rural communities as well. Next slide. So I'm going to give the year-end review. This is going to span 2019 and then tell you what we're doing in the first quarter of 2022. Look at the numbers. So when we talk about investment funds, we're talking about our Moonshot Flagstaff tenants, and we're talking about any funding they would have received, whether it be commercial lending, owner infusion, equity selling, series raising, any of that would be considered investment funds. As you can see, in 2019, we did 3.4 million, which was great. I think that 2020 could probably be called a mulligan for many things, but it dipped considerably in 2020 and then rose considerably in 2021 with almost 8 million in funding of some sort for our tenants on our campus. And in Quarter 1, we are up to almost 3 million in funding so far. Next slide. Revenue generated by our tenants on campus. In 2019, we were at 5.6 million. 2020 actually did not take as severe of a dip as we thought it would. We came in at 4.7 million in revenue for the companies. And in 2021, we really came back strong with almost 30 million in revenue for the Flagstaff campus. And in 2022, in the first quarter alone, we're at 5.6 million in revenue generated for our tenants on campus. Next slide. Jobs, which is the crux of what we do. In 2019, we were able to retain 259 jobs that were created in 2018, with 44 new jobs created in that year. In 2020, where we thought we would see a tremendous dip in not just jobs retained, but jobs created, we thought, really, we wouldn't see any. We actually retained 298 jobs and created 10 new jobs. And in 2021, for that year, we retained 307 jobs and created 77 new jobs. And we hope to see that number grow substantially in 2022. Next slide. So our occupancy rates for 2021, they had dipped in 2020, and there were concerns about that, but they quickly rebounded. We ended up with a total of 69% in occupancy, with 100% of the incubator being occupied and 60% of the accelerator being occupied. We also welcomed 10 new tenants to the campus in 2021, which are all listed here. Next slide. Our current occupancy as of May 2022 is at 78%, and it's still growing. We still have inquiries, and we are creating a little bit of a waiting list, so that bodes well for the rest of the year. Next slide. We're going to talk about some of the events that we've had in the past and a forward-looking event. Next slide. So our third annual AZ Pioneer Pitch Competition was held in Flagstaff November 12th and 13th of 2021. We had three winners, but we had some great sponsors first that I'd like to talk about. APS is always a great partner. The Arizona Commerce Authority is always a great partner, and I believe this is the first year that we were able to have live plan fully onboard. And they are sponsoring in kind by providing us access to their business plan building tool, and we provide that to our winners and to some of our tenants on campus. So that's wonderful. And our local sponsors, Sun West Bank, of course, City of Flagstaff, Nordstrom and Associates, Wanderlust Brewing, Drinking Horn Meadery. We're all thankful for the support that everyone gives us in Flagstaff. And winners from that event were Power Lab, Gurney Labs, which is now called Crosswalk Labs, and Take Your Time LLC. Those were the winners of the Flagstaff Pitch Event for 2021. Next slide. I'm proud to say that my first kind of official event on campus in my new role was the Innovate Waste Challenge Event, which is kind of full circle, because I remember the initiation of the Innovate Waste Challenge. I was a part of that first team with John Salt and Stahl and everyone else in the Sustainability Department of the City in Flagstaff, and it was an amazing event to me, and I was so happy to come back and see that it was still going strong. We had three winners. Our first-place winner for the Innovate Waste Challenge was Restoration Soils. Second-place winner was Crosswalk Labs, which, if you can remember, was originally called Gurney Labs. And honorable mention, Windswept Acres. Windswept Acres had an honorable mention. They are not residents of the City of Flagstaff, but they are working to can and repurpose undesirable foods. So there's an entire market now on foods that don't look so pretty, that don't end up on supermarket shelves and end up in landfills. They take those foods and they can them, and they give them second life. And we believe so strongly in the movement that they're doing, and their food is delicious. And we think that as this grows, it will be job creation in Flagstaff as well, as they expand to different areas. So we're super excited about them and gave them honorable mention and a smaller prize. But 31,000 in cash prizes was given for Innovate Waste, and I hope that continues to grow. It's an amazing program. Next slide. We're going to have our Second Annual Shoemaker Awards, which is June 17th of this year. The event is sold out. All the tables are sold, and we're getting all the names in place now. We are thankful to our sponsors and partners, City of Flagstaff, again, and APS. We're going to recognize some pretty important people that have done amazing things over the past year, so I'm super excited for that event, and I will be there. And if anyone from Mayor and Council will be there, I would love to say hello in person. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today. Next slide. Some other programs that we have, really quickly. So we have the Entrepreneurship Intern Certification that we're doing with the NAU, including Frankie, the College of Business, and the School of Engineering. That is a very successful program, in which we basically teach these new, soon-to-be graduate students, not just how to apply themselves for a job, but to really figure out how they fit in, what do they bring to the table, and how best can they showcase that. And we're very proud to say that our first group that graduated from this program, if you will, when we had our presentation, which is the last class, I think, and I'll get you accurate numbers, correct numbers, later, at least four of the students were offered jobs from the different companies that were represented on the call that day, and we hope the same will happen with this next group of students. And then we have our We Mean Business. One of my focuses coming to the campus is to make sure that we keep inclusion front of mind. And We Mean Business, which is focused on women entrepreneurs and business leaders, has been going on for a very long time. It's still successful. We just finally came back in person, and our attendance is growing with each event that we have in person. It's a wonderful program that we're actually going to expand upon. And then I'm also going to introduce new programming that lends to more diversity on campus. Next slide, please. And that is it for my updates. I thank Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council very much for giving me this time, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you very much. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and great to see you on the screen, hopefully in person soon. I'm just wondering, can you expand? I know you mentioned it a little bit. Can you expand on Scott moving down south and maybe some of the programs that are happening? I'm not sure if everyone knows, but Moonshot has expanded, it sounds like. So can you expand a little bit? Thanks.
Yes, absolutely. So during COVID, it was a challenging time. One of the things that we realized is Moonshot had a great many things to offer, different cities and municipalities, when it came to economic development and workforce development. And so we gained several new contracts that we didn't have before. And Scott did actually relocate down to the valley to kind of be closer to travel, if you will, to all of these different areas, Tucson being one of them. to all of these different areas, Tucson being one of them. In that discovery of the growth, we realized that it was important that our flagship, where we started, isn't left behind and doesn't suffer from the growth. And so that Executive Director position was created, and it was decided that I would be able to come and truly be reflective of what Moonshot feels about the partnership with the City of Flagstaff, that there would be someone in Flagstaff ready to commit and engage with the community and let corporate, which is the arm that we call Scott now and his team, let corporate continue their growth. But I'm committed to the City of Flagstaff and making sure that the Flagstaff campus has whatever resources it needs. I would also add that this growth that Moonshot is seeing is beneficial in several different ways. It shines a spotlight on where it all started. Flagstaff is our flagship, no pun intended, and will always be near and dear to who we are as an organization because without your support, we wouldn't have been able to grow as we have. So it sheds a light on the flagship campus, and it creates more opportunity, I dare say globally, for us to be put on the map and seen as a place that has some of the best resources for entrepreneurship and the best quality of life. And I think that is a benefit. Even if it's not Flagstaff going out there, it's Moonshot Corporate, it still benefits us in Flagstaff. I hope that answered your question, Vice Mayor.
It does, thank you. Some very exciting things. I love going to NESA and looking at all the projects and businesses going on. And I think you're doing a terrific job, and thank you for working hard on this.
I hope to do more.
Thank you, Ms. White. I'm not seeing any other questions from Counsel. So yeah, appreciate your time and giving us the update.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Have a great evening.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 9, the Regional Plan 2045 Collaborative Process Discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of Counsel. My name is Sarah Decter. I am the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. And I am back with you after a year of, our first year of outreach on the Flagstaff Regional Plan to discuss the upcoming phases of work on this project and to join in the conversation of how we conduct the collaborative process going forward. I believe with me today on virtually is Melissa Shaw, who is the Long Range Planner for Coconino County and my co-project lead, as this is a shared project between the city and Coconino County. Melissa, are you there? There you go.
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Good afternoon.
Great. So today, we are going to do a short review of the Public Participation Plan Outline and Guiding Principles, which, I know it's been a little while since we put it up on the screen, so we'll take over that one more time. We're going to talk about the outreach we've completed and what is underway for the summer, the upcoming outreach opportunities, and ask for your feedback on a few issues of how we would be advertising and evaluating a consultant in the future to help us with our collaborative and deliberative processes in Phase 2. We also have a discussion of whether or not there is a desire to pursue a compensation option for participants. So first, I'd like to give just two quick slides for anyone who's watching who doesn't know what the regional plan is. I know Counsel already knows. But the regional plan is the General Plan for the City of Flagstaff and an Area Plan for Coconino County. And it contains 97 goals and 508 policies. It is the only document besides the city charter that is ratified by voters and serves as a policy document for Flagstaff. It has a generalized land use map that identifies activity centers that were based on robust scenario planning and provides a transportation modeling basis and water modeling basis for the city and for MetroPlan. This generalized land use map is called our Future Growth Illustration, and when there is an application for a rezoning or an annexation, it must be found in conformance with this map and with the policies. And so we regularly have conversations with the Board of Supervisors, the City Council, and the Planning and Zoning Commissions at the city and the county about this map, what it means, and how it charts path for the future of the community. That's my super-fast update. Our plan for updating the regional plan and sending it back to voters in 2024 or 2025 is that we are working in four phases. This first phase, really one of the emphasis was to really look at our data. There's 180 metrics that can be associated with the regional plan to get it organized, to analyze it, to share that information with the public, and then to create some art and excitement and gather people who are interested in working with us together on a collaborative process to develop the next plan. We have been working on that for the last year, and we'll talk a little bit more about what exactly has been done in that area. But Phase 2 is the one that is coming up for us, and it is a very important phase because it is the one that talks about trade-offs and future scenarios that may not look like the way Flagstaff looks today. As the last three years have shown us, there are often unexpected and outside pressures that can influence how our community grows and changes. And we will be working with the community to talk through some of our anticipation of things that are positive, our worries about things that may be influencing our community in a way we don't want to see, and what the trade-offs are between different paths that we could take as a community moving forward. This is going to be a very iterative process. So throughout the next year, we're going to be having workshops and surveys and feedback loops that feed on each other to start building that vision and understanding whether that vision is realistic and what could impact it in the future. I know I have lots of questions from people about whether Phase 2 will include an advisory committee. And the decision from a year ago was that we would have a collaborative process, but it would not be one that was directly appointed to sit and help us write the plan. We discussed saving that for Phase 3 when we're actually sitting down and writing and evaluating policy-driven text. The reasons for that were that the previous advisory committee met over five years and had a lot of turnover and had trouble maintaining consistency and diversity in its membership. And so to keep the task clear and short, there's not a plan for an advisory committee in Phase 2, but rather this collaborative process that we'll be discussing in more detail tonight. And then, of course, Counsel and the Board of Supervisors will need to come up with an order of operation for adopting the regional plan as it's adopted differently in the city and the county. Last time, we tried to do it simultaneously, and it ended up that we adopted slightly different versions of the regional plan, which I think the Board of Supervisors and Counsel have both previously expressed that they would like it to be more synchronized so that whatever is adopted in the city is the same as what the county ends up adopting. We have several guiding principles for this process. The first one is right people, right agenda, right timing. We have not jumped into community-wide meetings that bring a lot of people together without a clear purpose. We have been having very focused meetings and accepting invitations to have focused meetings with any community group that's interested in meeting with us. And especially, we're picking that up this summer. We've probably been to three or four organizational meetings in the last month. We expect that to be even more robust as we keep working forward and building the network of people who have an interest in this long-range planning topic. We are working too to make sure that the public and experts are brought into the room together. Now, every member of the public is an expert in their part of the community. But we also have people with subject matter expertise that want to be a part of these conversations. And we're trying to build platforms that respect both of those roles and perspectives while also bringing together the ability to have meaningful conversations. There is a need for outside facilitation because as an employee of the City of Flagstaff and for Melissa, as an employee of Coconino County, we get perceived as being a representative of government, which means we're not always seen as a neutral third party. And so we will have, we are working towards putting out contracts to facilitate these key conversations on trade-offs, one in a scenario planning effort and the other in this collaborative process. We are also using equity and inclusion as a guiding principle and trying to make sure that all of our outreach really focuses on bringing the broadest and most representative community members into the conversation and doing the lift to make sure everyone has equal footing at the table. We are also working to build clear expectations for endorsing the plan, both in terms of timing and content. So what have we done in the last eight to 10 months? We have posted 22 webinars that were held between October and May to the City of Flagstaff's YouTube page and website. These webinars are a 15-minute presentation by some experts on whatever topic we were discussing at that time, and 15 minutes of Q and A. The live, actual attendance was same couple people most of the time, but there was actually much better views. Once we got it on YouTube, people started watching them. Maybe two or three months later, people would call me and say, hey, I just watched this video on the city's YouTube channel. I have a bunch of questions for you. And we'd put them in touch with either the presenters or try and answer them. So even though these were happening every Monday at noon, and that wasn't always a convenient time, they live online, and they are a great resource that we're hoping as people are entering the process, they'll use to help ground our conversations. We are working on papers, completed with the short papers, no more than five pages each, that cover some of these topics for those who would like to digest the material in writing. And we hope to have about 15 of them completed before the end of the summer. We also launched a GIS-based website and a regular e-newsletter that was going out weekly due to the webinars, but will start appearing monthly in boxes. And there is a place on our website where anyone can sign up for that. We've also been working with Sonia London Hall and using funding from the Beautification and Public Arts Commission to build art-based participation opportunities, which we've already launched at Earth Day and at the STEAM City event that FUSD had. We have art boxes that cover several different topics associated with the regional plan, where people can, instead of having, you know, a very data-driven conversation with us about how many miles of pipes there are in the city and what we do to ensure our water sustainability, they can reflect on it in a much more creative way and provide some feedback to us on what it is they care about associated with water, open space, placemaking, and other topics. And so we have been very lucky. We really appreciate BPAC's interest in developing a unique opportunity. And we are going to be in events all throughout the summer with these art boxes for people to sit down and have a place that's maybe more relaxing and less stressful to have these conversations. We've also been coordinating with the Regional Transportation Plan that MetroPlan is preparing and Mountain Line and sharing resources across these three simultaneous planning efforts. The last thing we've done in this 10-month period is we have worked on, with most, not all yet, of the city and county commissions. I know as commission liaison, several council members have gotten to observe strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat assessments. We've been using particularly this method with the commissions because all of them provide expertise and a sounding board on a particular topic that ties to the regional plan. And we will be hoping to put together a complete report of the outcome of those efforts by the end of August. This summer, we have already launched and are underway with being at many, many summer events with a booth, both with an opportunity to fill out the online survey that's available now and with opportunity to work on the art boxes that we will be bringing out with us in these efforts. We are coming, in the next month, we will be at Three Concerts in the Park and Juneteenth, the county's diversity fair. And there's one more I'm forgetting. But we've done about one or two per week, and that's probably going to be the pace at which we're working all summer. The biggest of these is we're going to host a three-day booth at the Coconino County Fair in hopes of reaching the broadest audience that we can in our community. So we're also working on building relationships that help with targeted outreach in our hard-to-reach communities, especially those who don't speak English as a first language and those who are, maybe feel marginalized or don't have strong connections with the city and county government. We are on the verge of requesting a contractor for scenario planning, and then visioning workshops will take place in the fall. So first, I want to talk a little bit about visioning workshops. Between August and October this year, we are hoping to have 12 community workshops throughout the region. These will sort of be neighborhood meetings, but a little broader. And the goal is to get community and smaller area visions for the Flagstaff region and to help prioritize the issues and planning questions that people want to discuss across the region. The areas, there are some areas within this region that have recently adopted either area or neighborhood plans. And so in those areas, we'll be customizing these workshops so that we are honoring the work that those communities have done. The second piece is scenario planning. Scenario planning is a process by which we work on looking at mega trends and also looking at micro trends that may influence how our community grows and changes for the next 20, 60 to 80 to 100 years. And that includes scanning the current reality, projecting forecasts, looking at our influential factors that can be producing potential futures. This is a pretty complicated and data-hungry process, and it's a pretty specialized process. So we expect that the City of Flagstaff will have an RSOQ out for scenario planning in June. It's working its way through the purchasing process right now. We will be looking for a consultant that can provide both the technical and the public participation support for this more complicated piece that helps us understand trade-offs. So now to the questions and discussion we're hoping to put before Counsel tonight. We identified in that Phase 2 a collaborative process. And we didn't get very far in defining what that collaborative process looked like, just that we needed one that took all the pieces we just talked about and created an environment to deliberate and understand their outcomes. In your packets, you receive a summary of what a few of these could look like. We have not selected a collaborative technique because there is some funding in the coming budget to fund a consultant to assist us with this. So very likely, what we would propose to do as staff is to put out this request for proposals and have qualified consultants propose methods that they would be comfortable facilitating and leading in the community. Because there are also other techniques besides the four that I'm going to just discuss really briefly that may meet our objectives that we haven't thought about because there's lots of practitioners out there with great ideas and lots of ways to meet our community's needs. The first potential collaborative option is informal working groups. And this is the one that Flagstaff uses the most often. It's the process we just used for the 10-year housing plan. This involves forming working groups under the umbrella of a commission and meeting on a regular basis to work through specific topics. Sometimes there are quorum issues associated with subcommittees and working groups, and that is something we would keep an eye on if this was ultimately what we selected to move forward. Another really interesting way that we could do this is something called study circles. Study circles would be like a meeting in a box or a set of meetings in the box that staff would prepare, and we would bring in community members to be the facilitators of those groups. They would both facilitate and form the groups. So for instance, the Native Americans for Community Action could say, we would like to form a study group, and we would provide materials and support for their facilitation of the group. Another group in the community could be a church community that says, we'd like to have a study circle in our church. And we would provide them the support to be able to do that. The way we would bring study circles together, if we were to pick this approach, is to have a conference or a workshop where representatives from all the study circles come together to have that deliberative process. But this gives very equal footing, and people get to meet on their own turf before they meet as a larger community group. A citizens' assembly is a process that is not used very frequently in the United States, but is very common in Canada, Britain, and in Australia and New Zealand, which is to bring together a randomly selected group based on applications that's demographically and geographically representative of the community and then to pull them together in a legislative style. So they, as a group, would be presented with questions to which they would introduce bills and solutions and would have a legislative process that's chaired, much like Counsel or a commission would be. Then we could also have a citizens' panel, which would be panels that could be pulled together for specific topics that are associated with a different kind of program called an ambassador program. Ambassador is usually sign an agreement to work on behalf of a project to help with outreach and bringing other people in their community to the process. So all of these are very interesting and empowering ways to make sure that it is not just a staff-led process, but a community-led process to develop this plan. But the question is, going forward, there are lots of ifs. So what we would like Counsel to discuss, and this is our first set of questions. We'll have a second set going forward. We'll have a second set going forward, is what criteria or skills do you think are important to consider in selecting a consultant for this collaborative process? And then what should the evaluation team consider when we look at techniques that a potential consultant may propose?
Thank you, Ms. Decter. Well, council, we've got a couple of questions here. I have some thoughts. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, I think that whatever consultant we hire should have a very good understanding of the interrelationship between land use patterns and transportation, you know, of all modes, and also carbon emissions implications. In other words, probably the biggest thing we can do to affect transportation and carbon emissions is the way we lay the city out. Obviously, that's a very slow process, changes over 50 years or whatever. But if we don't address that, then we've missed the boat.
Thank you. Others, Councilmember House?
Yes, I would agree with that, Councilmember McCarthy. The other notes that I had were just ensuring that whoever was selected was someone who had a history of engagement with the various cultural and identity groups representative of Flagstaff, particularly, I think, for Flagstaff, a history of partnership and engagement with Indigenous communities, but also just understanding the unique characteristics and methods of engaging with those different groups. Because each has, you know, their own ways and their own traditions that are very important in terms of building up that trust and engagement. So making sure that's part of the conversation as well.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you. So the two things I was going to touch on, both have been said, so I would just like to echo that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, House took my thunder there. Yeah, the, the local knowledge particularly about the, we serve a very unique community, demographically, culturally. And it's going to be key for them to have that local understanding and, you know, hopefully real local as in knowledgeable about Flagstaff because it is a rare community that has similar dynamics that we do. So that, that was my big aspect. But also working both with city and county because of the, you know, lack of fully parallel lines from the county and city last time, that we want to make sure that they have that collaborative processes and collaboration with both city and county through the process and good relations there. Any others? All right. Well, I think we got the first question put together. What should the evaluation team consider when evaluating the techniques that potential consultant, that potential consultant propose? Well, that kind of is right up with what we already discussed, really. You know, they all, yeah, they all tie together here. So again, the particular knowledge and how to activate in different subgroups in our community.
Excellent.
For engagement.
Great. So part two of what we wanted to visit with you tonight about, for this work session is, I'm not going to read what's on the screen. I'm just putting it up there for you to read, is to discuss one potential way to add an equity lens to any process that we might select in terms of techniques and consultants, which is to provide an outreach strategy that allows for some compensation of participants. This is not, I have to say upfront, something we've dug very far into. We have no policy that allows us to do this currently as a city. And so when it's come up in the past, we've said, we don't really do that. That's just not something that's been on the radar at this time. The regional plan, though, is very unique in terms of how broad the outreach needs to be for it to be successful, remembering that this process actually has to go to voters and not just a city council or a Board of Supervisors decision. And so with that, there's also new guidance in the last year from the American Planning Association, which Melissa and I are a part of, that talks about why considering a compensation policy, doesn't say you have to have one, is an important equity consideration in any long-range planning process. So what is a compensation process? It is simply a way to provide some kind of compensation to participants. I provided in your packet some research that was done by a colleague in Bozeman, Montana, where she reached out nationwide to groups and organizations that were already doing some kind of compensation. Most of these fell into education or public health-oriented fields. However, elections is also another area in which compensation is sometimes provided to volunteers. And so these are just a few ways to consider. But staff has not dug into the legal or employment or tax laws associated with this. We are here tonight simply to find out if there is interest from council in pursuing the staff time it would take to better understand what that could mean and how we might be able to execute it. So generally, when you have a compensation policy, you sign some kind of agreement with the people who you are going to compensate that says, here's the compensation you're getting, and here is what you're doing on our behalf. It can be administered by either a consultant or by the city. So one of the reasons we ask this now is if we're putting out this contract for collaborative process, we could include, do you as a consultant have policies or programs that allow for compensation of participants? And how do you employ those? How much do they cost? So that is something we can ask in the solicitation and get an idea if the consultant can assist us. So for instance, citizens' assemblies usually have some kind of compensation associated with them. It's a very regular part of it. It's either childcare vouchers and travel expenses, or sometimes it's also some kind of stipend. And so consultants that do that process may be very familiar with a compensation process. Others maybe would have to have a better understanding of how they could work into that, it towards that, if it's the desire of council and the Board of Supervisors to pursue this. So as we said, the reason many cities right now are having this conversation, for a standalone project or otherwise, is that there are past disparities and current affordability issues with Flagstaff is very familiar with, and also time barriers to participation that can skew who participates and who shows up for these conversations. The regional plan process last time did start with a very diverse group of stakeholders. And over time, the feedback I was given is they just didn't have time for it anymore. It wasn't something they could continue to pursue when it was taking, you know, three, four years to do, and they weren't seeing a lot out of it in return. So it can also be a way, in a lengthy process, of keeping people engaged for more than a year sometimes is necessary. This is also an emerging practice in planning, while it's executed sometimes in education or in public health on a more regular basis. For instance, both the Southside Association and NACA have both, have both done rare assessments. And that has an element of compensation to it for participants who are out there gathering input from the wider community. It's very new to planning and for urban planning in particular. So it's just an opportunity to have this discussion and consider whether it's a step we want to engage in. So the question for council to discuss, and we are going to go to the Board of Supervisors and have this conversation too, is is this an element of public participation that the city wants to pursue specifically for the regional plan? And if so, what would we need to know or what would council like us to consider before we came back with more information? As I said, we're not ready to jump tonight. We're just ready to start.
Excellent, thank you. Thoughts, council? McCarthy, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I do want to say something, but I don't know what it is yet.
All right, well, I'll, I'll jump in here. I, I'm, I'd like to see the research on this. I think it is worth just perusing, not, you know, des- designating tens upon tens of hours looking into. But if there's any, you know, literature or scholarly articles about how it could increase participation, I just want to make sure it's efficacious to be doing so and ensuring that this isn't just an idea, but we're going to see some results from it. And I would need to see that research to feel comfortable moving in this direction.
Councilmember McCarthy?
I guess we'd need some kind of estimate of what it would cost, too. I did note when I read the packet that if a person wants to just volunteer their time, they can. And so some people probably would. So, you know, I, I was involved as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission the last time we did a regional plan years ago. And of course, I volunteered my time and did not expect any compensation. I guess I kind of agree with the mayor, like, you know, how much better is it going to get if we do compensate people? It seems like last time, we did have a lot of people that were willing to volunteer their time. And maybe the key to success is getting those meetings. I sat through a couple of those meetings, and they would just go on and on and on. So maybe we could like, you know, maybe your money is better spent with a good facilitator that can move the discussion a little faster and have it more focused so that the meetings don't go on and on. And that might solve the problem that we're trying to address here. So I haven't given you a real answer, but I've talked around it a little bit. Maybe I stimulated some thoughts with Mr. Aslan.
Actually, I have Councilmember Shimoney who's on here, and then we'll go to Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for the great presentation and your work on this. Very exciting topic that we're discussing tonight. I, I also just really appreciate the study circles. Just wanted to mention that. I think that's really intriguing and I forget what you called it, but that, 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 what they do, I think, in New Zealand and Canada and other locations with the citizens, I thought was really interesting. But to the point, the, the discussion that we're talking about here, I think if we want to have, you know, I think involvement in these types of things is critical for the success of what we're trying to do, especially given how, the importance of the regional plan. But I also think involvement is a privilege, you know? Like, Councilmember McCarthy, your service, we greatly appreciate it, but not everyone can afford that type of time and commitment. So, you know, how much better will it be? Well, I think we'll have voices that we don't usually hear from. And so I think it'll be a lot better, from my, my opinion at least, my gut response. And, and if we do want this to be an inclusive plan, which I know we do, I, I fully support staff exploring compensation, mayor and council. I think that makes a lot of sense to me. And I just see how disconnected our population is from the work we do often. And like you said, Sarah, the same couple people show up at the meetings. This would help change that in a big way. So I'd be curious what staff comes back to us with. And, and I'm pretty, pretty, feeling pretty comfortable with us pursuing this, at least, you know, in theory, just to have further dialogue about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to piggyback on what Councilmember McCarthy said real quickly. This may go without saying, but not only an estimate, but where does that money come from? What is, what is the color of the money? And, you know, I, for me, I pride myself in being an early innovator of new techniques and ideas and technologies and approaches. So I'm totally open to this, but would like to have a little bit more information.
Councilmember House?
I think I'm in agreement with what the other council members have said. I, I did want to piggyback off of what Councilmember Shimoney said about the study circles and just the interest in that. And really, in reading through the presentation and the, the information that you shared, there was a section that talked about whether in terms of compensation or otherwise, that method of partnering with community organizations that specifically work with some of those groups that you're trying to better engage with. It, I think it's very helpful in terms of, of engaging with those groups to have those, those sorts of partnerships in place because they might be able to reach out and solicit some more of that support that we, we might not otherwise see.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney has a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I totally forgot to add one last important point that Councilmember House mentioned, which, Sarah, I'm wondering, you know, does it have to always be financial? Can we do like, so a way to make it simple where we just give out gift cards or some, some kind of alternative compensation or gift in exchange?
Mayor, Councilmember Shimoney, yes, I think that is one of the options. I mean, as I said, sometimes it's a reimbursement-based compensation. Like, if you had to pay a babysitter to attend a meeting, that you could provide the receipts or an invoice to the city, and we would pay it so that you could come participate. Or it could be paying for a babysitter to be available at your, at the meeting location. Right now, we really only can provide that at the Aquaplex because that's where there's a kid's corner that has the ability to have people who have background checks and first aid training and all the things it takes to watch a room with kids in it. And so I think that those are the kinds of things that can be discussed in terms of what does that look like and how do we provide it?
Thank you. And I, I like the childcare idea. I think that, that is an excellent direct method that we can say, this is going to help people get more engaged as opposed to some of these newer ideas. So Sterling?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor and city council, I know Adam, Councilmember Shimoney raised the potential of gift cards. I just wanted to verbalize in the chat. Rick Tatter had noted legally, they're still a form of compensation. So you have to remember that.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I mean, do we get into a situation where we're having to issue statements to the Internal Revenue Service of how much a person got paid and those kind of things? You know, this could get.
You do start to get into that, yeah.
It gets complicated. It sounds like the council is interested, but careful.
We'll also need to see what the county has to say about it, too, because obviously, we ain't, we ain't the ones only fronting the bill, if that's the case. So, and they certainly want to, wouldn't want to do it alone when it's a combined document. All right. I'm not seeing anything further in the chat box, so.
All I have, all I have left for you is, many times throughout the presentation, I, I referenced a few things, so I just wanted to put this up. Our website for this project is www dot flagstaffaz.gov/regionalplan. And through that website, you can get to our webinars, join the mailing list, or take the visioning survey that is open right now. That visioning survey asks three really key things. It says, what do you think Flagstaff's honor code is? What does it mean to be a member of the Flagstaff community? What do you, it gives you a chance to write your own vision as you would see it for the Flagstaff region, and it asks you what planning questions we should really be asking ourselves as we start this process. So I'd encourage everybody to go visit the website.
Thank you much. All right. Moving right along here. We are down to agenda item number 10. This is case numbers PZ dash 22 dash 00074, request for a work session to discuss the Noble Herb's proposed amendment to the zoning code to revise the existing hours of operation for marijuana dispensaries. And case number PZ dash 222 dash 00089, request for a work session to discuss the city's proposed amendment to the zoning code to address marijuana operations in the City of Flagstaff by updating terms and definitions to include recreation-only retail establishments and potentially revise the separation requirements for all marijuana operations. Ms. Antle?
Hi, thank you so much for your time tonight. We have two separate text amendments. We're just running them together just to convenience on the topic. And they just happen to fall, one from a particular applicant, and one is a follow-up to a work session that was held with legal, our attorney, Kevin Fensel, on April 12th in regards to the social equity licenses that have recently been issued. So two work sessions, two different topics. So we'll jump into the first. And that first is a request by Noble Herb to extend our dispensary hours of operation. So right now, the zoning code limits the hours of operation for dispensaries from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The applicant is asking for that code amendment to now read 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The applicant also submitted a rationale for their request. The primary one is, is that it would be similar to hours of operation of pharmacies, which are similar to at least the medical marijuana operation. Last week, we did have a work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll follow up with some of the conversations that we had at that particular work session. that we had at that particular work session. So, this is, this is a very simple amendment. Here's the overview. In addition to their narrative and their request and the explanation, they've also provided a list of cities in Arizona and hours of operation as well. So, that was attached for your review. Next, the city is working on amendment to allow specifically single recreational sales establishment. So, the city is requesting to amend the zoning code to address them, to address marijuana operations in the City of Flagstaff by updating terms and definitions to include that single recreational sales establishments and potentially revise the separation requirements for all marijuana operations. So, here's sort of an overview of what this text amendment would look like. We would basically be changing marijuana dispensary to marijuana retail establishment. And that would change in the use table. This particular marijuana dispensary is particularly allowed in the highway commercial zone. That is the only zoning category that right now allows that sort of sales use. So, instead of calling it specifically a dispensary, which most people attribute to medical, the terminology would be changed to make it retail. And lastly, just to true up some terms, we would change the other terminology from location to establishment. We're just trying to true up and get closer to the Arizona revised statutes definitions. And lastly, we would look at an overview of, this is the particular section that calls out the standards for all, currently, we call them establishments. The proposal here is to call them operations. And the reason is, is because we are using the terminology different than Arizona revised statutes is using it. So, we want to make our own unique terminology. So, there's no argument between Arizona revised statutes and our zoning code. In this case, we wanted to look specifically at the separation. So, here are those separation standards. Right now, we require 2,000-foot separation from any other marijuana establishment. And that, I want to make sure you understand that establishment includes all operations. So, that is not just the sales, but that's the cultivation, that's the manufacturing and the testing as well. There's a 500-foot distance from a residential substance abuse treatment facility or other residential drug or alcohol rehab facility, 500 feet from a community college/university, or from any public-private periocal charter, dramatic dancing, music learning center, or other singular school or education facility that caters to children, 500 feet from a daycare home or daycare center, 500 feet from a public library or public park, and 500 feet from a facility devoted to family recreation or entertainment. So, here's what the overview of the proposed amendment looks like in full. We would rename marijuana establishment to marijuana operation and add retail establishment to the definition to avoid conflicts with ASRS. Rename marijuana off-site cultivation location and marijuana off-site manufacturing location to off-site cultivation establishment and marijuana off-site manufacturing location to better, so both of them go from location to establishment to better align with Arizona revised statutes. And delete the marijuana dispensary definition and replace with marijuana retail establishment. So, marijuana establishment would include a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary, a dual-licensed establishment, as well as a single recreational retail establishment. The use is always allowed as accessory, cultivation, manufacturing, processing, packaging, or storage. So, these are the questions that we asked the Planning and Zoning Commission last week. Should the City of Flagstaff expand the hours of operation for marijuana dispensaries or marijuana retail establishments? Should the City of Flagstaff allow single recreational retail establishments to operate in the city, thereby accommodating social equity licenses? And should the City of Flagstaff increase the separation distance requirements for marijuana dispensaries or marijuana retail establishments to ensure public health, safety, and welfare are maintained? And I can tell you, I don't have a definitive consensus across the board. Of the five commissioners that provided comments, three were concerned over the hours of operation. They could see going to 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. 10 was of a concern. There were two commissioners that did not have that, did not share that same concern, however, in terms of the hours. And in terms of the allowing recreational, nobody made a comment in regards to this particular question as a whole. But last, and we had a very long conversation, so I am summarizing this quite a bit. So, if you want more detail, I'll try to provide it. I do have my notes here. And then lastly, should the City of Flagstaff increase the separation distance? The two that were fine with the hours thought it would probably be reasonable to look at increasing the separation distance. And they were mostly interested in increasing the separation distance between dispensaries. So, right now, that 2,000 feet, they were thinking of it. Again, the retail establishments are allowed in our highway commercial. Sorry, I didn't bring a map for you. But if you think of that highway commercial, it sort of follows the main corridor through Flagstaff, as it comes through Milton, and then as it wraps around. And so, part of the conversation was, other communities where dispensaries filled sort of the main commercial corridors. And so, requiring a larger separation between dispensaries could create more, better-looking corridor potentially, concerns about them all being along that primary corridor. Of course, there are other areas in Flagstaff that do have the highway commercial zone, but they're smaller. The concentration really is on that, those primary corridors. With that being said, the other three didn't really have or see much need for that increase in separation. So, again, not bringing you great consensus, but am looking for some direction tonight from you all on where you would like me to proceed. Would like to move forward with the public hearings on these items and need to make the final, final amendments to the public hearing notices, as well as to the draft text amendment. So, would be looking for feedback from you tonight on where we need to go. When the second city text amendment does move forward, Legal will be moving with me to do another amendment to the other portion of city council or city code that also deals with marijuana sales. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions we've got right now?
And I did want to point out that Noble Herb's representatives are also here, in case there's any conversation with them that is necessary.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tiffany, for the presentation and your work on this. I would be curious to know, moving forward, and I don't think you mentioned it tonight, but approximately, like, if we did increase the separation distances, what potentially can be built? You know, I've heard, I think, around five to eight can be built within the city limits. But, you know, if we did increase the separation, if that conversation continues, which I do support it continuing, I'm wondering, does that limit us to four potentially, or three? So, I guess I just ask that, that specific lens is, you know, part of the discussion.
Sure. No matter what, it's really hard to pinpoint down the exact numbers based on all of the separation and the fluidity of those uses. As we all know, daycare scanners and preschools are a use that can tend to move around. We also, we also currently don't have a use in our code listed as a rehab facility quite the way that we listed in the separation requirement, which is sort of unique. Those uses tend to fall under a different category. There are just, there are some things that are hard to track unless you're really getting into those, those deep locations. But it, and it would depend on how much further we went from 2,000 feet. But if you, here's a good example. Right now, Noble Herb's, you can see where Noble Herb's new location is, and you know where their old location is. Right now, they overlap. They hit each other in 2,000 feet. So, they would be too close. So, they, like, both sites couldn't remain in operation, if that helps. With that being said, I would, I would think that if we went half a mile, so 2,000 feet is just short of half a mile. If we looked at half a mile or three-quarters of a mile, you're probably cutting out maybe one or two possible locations. But Planning and Zoning Commission did not have any specific recommendations. I think one commissioner said a mile, throughout the distance of a mile, which is over 5,000 feet.
All right. Well, I have thoughts on this, but we will be holding a public hearing a little later on this. Is that scheduled yet? Or what's the order of operations with P and Z and future meetings?
Sure. So, order of operations, we thought it would be good to have this work session with you all to talk about specifically separations, and if that was something you did want us to pursue. We did get good direction on working on a proposed amendment for the single-use or recreational sales. At this point, depending upon the direction tonight, we'd like to proceed to public hearing on June 22nd before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We won't make counsel before break, but would like to hit counsel, right, as you first come back, on August 23rd. First read, second read would be September 6th.
September 6th. Excellent. I appreciate moving on this because, just so counsel is aware, with the social equity licenses, they only have 18 months before they have to give them back to the state. So, if there are any social equity licenses here in Flagstaff that, that, we do need to be mindful of the time and not kick this forever. So, thank you for bringing it forward. Looking forward to hearing more from P and Z and Councilmember McCarthy has to say.
So, is it appropriate to give our thoughts on what we should or shouldn't do at this point? Or are we just here to say, oh, we'll do this some other day?
I would, I would love your feedback.
Well, I'll make some comments then.
Go for it.
That's all right. Hours of operation, I'm open-minded about the change that's proposed, or something close to that. As far as the dual license issue, I think it is reasonable to have a person with a marijuana conviction, when marijuana was illegal, for them to get a license. But I don't think it's justified to give them advantage over people who did not violate the law. So, translated, if you want that in simple language, I don't support the dual licenses. I think we should keep the rule the way it is right now.
So, right now, we allow the dual license. This would be for single-
Wait, wait, let's see. Dual licenses, they have to have a dual license. In other words-
Okay.
So, under the new rule, there would be this special type of license, which I don't support, because in effect is awarding people for breaking the law. And I don't support that, just as a matter of principle. And then, as far as separation, you know, it might make sense to increase it a little bit to, say, half a mile or 2,500 feet. But I don't think, you know, a whole mile would, that's not necessary. I agree that it's, we don't want a whole cluster of these all together, like we have bars downtown. So, I'd probably support some increase, maybe 2,500 feet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shimoney.
So, I'll share my thoughts as well. I have no concerns with the hours personally. I'm okay with us mirroring pharmacy hours. I think that I'm intrigued by the conversation around distance separation, but I'm also okay with the current 2,000 feet. I think that, from what I've heard, I think there's about five to eight, I want to say, that could be built in the city currently, roughly estimated. Again, that's complicated to pin down, but, and obviously, those won't come in overnight. But, and then, I'm okay with the recreation equity licenses as a, as an option for business in our city. Councilmember McCarthy and I might disagree on this one a little bit, and that's fine, of course. But I feel that these are ethical and appropriate to allow for. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember Shimoney. All state, I have no issues with the 10 o'clock move. I'd, I'd like to open it up to recreational, not just the dual licenses. And I have no problem with the current distances, as stated. If we get too restrictive on that, then they will simply go out of city limits, and we will lose all that tax revenue. So, if they go across the street, then, well, that's a big knock to us and has no general beneficial outcome otherwise. So, that's where I'm at with all those. But I'm also open to the conversation, particularly on the distances. And it might be good for us to get a visual of it, like we've seen for, okay, this is what it looks like at 2,000 feet, this is what it looks like at 2,500 feet. And that visualization, I think, would be good if staff could put that together for us to visualize.
Will do.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you much. All right. Should we power through, or should we take a quick break? Because this one's probably going to be a little, yep. We're going to take a 10-minute break right now. So, I was waiting for Jeremy to stand up first before I said that. But we're going to do a 13-minute break. It's 4:27. We'll reconvene at 4:40. Thanks. We're good to get started here. We got live streaming up?
Yes, Mayor, we're good to go.
Excellent. We're down to Agenda Item 11, 4th Street, Lockett Road, Cedar Avenue, Roundabout Discussion. Jeremy, take us away.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Jeremy Degater. I'm a project manager of the Capital Improvement Section here at the City of Flagstaff. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the 4th Street, Cedar Avenue, Lockett Road Roundabout. A quick outline of our presentation tonight. We're going to start off with project background history, go over some of the public outreach that has occurred to this point, talk about roundabout benefits and design considerations, and then we'll take a closer look at pedestrian and bicycle safety. We'll talk a bit about schools and roundabouts. And then, we'll talk about our wrap-up, which will be educational engagement efforts that we have planned. I'll caveat this by saying that many of these slides council has seen before, or most of council has seen before. So, I'll be going through these relatively quickly. But please feel free to jump in, ask any questions as we go along. We can always go back and explain things further if there's any questions. With that, just a quick reminder of where this project is located. I think at this point, we have a pretty good understanding. This is located at 4th Street, Cedar Avenue, Lockett Road. There's quite a bit going on in this area. We've got three different schools. We've got Puente, MEMS, Pine Forest Charter School. We've also got CCC. So, this is the 4th Street campus for the Coquenino County Community College. We've got the East Flagstaff Family Library, and we have North Country in the area. We are directly adjacent to Greenlaw and the Sunnyside neighborhoods. This project is a highway safety improvement program, grant-funded project. So, this is, we applied for an HSIP grant back in 2018. This application was based on utilizing a roundabout at this location to mitigate the safety issues that we had seen in the past. So, there have been fatalities, vehicle fatal, vehicle accident fatalities at this intersection, and several severe injuries in the last five years. And that serves as the basis for why we were approved for that application and received the grant funding as it was. And this is based on the CRAS modification factor. So, roundabouts are very safe for all users, scored very high, gave us a high benefit-to-cost ratio, which is what's used in evaluating those applications, ultimately leading to the award of this grant. Just an update on financial impact. I think we've all seen this recently. When we came back, this is pretty much in line with what we saw with the IGA amendment. We are currently in that design phase, hoping to begin that right away and temporary construction easement acquisition phase. So, to date, we've expended about $450,000 of those grant monies. The city share related to the design phase has been $103,000. The project has seen cost escalations. We're all aware of what's happened over the past several years as it relates to projects in general. The total city share as we approved with the IGA amendment has gone from effectively $60,000 up to just over $2 million. One thing that I'll point out here is that, should this project be canceled or delayed, we have a time period that we can complete the project within. ADOT's current stance is that the city would be responsible to repay any of the federal monies that have been expended, so the $450,000. I'll also add that the City Attorney's Office has not- I'll also add that the City Attorney's Office has not, we've not been able to confer with the Attorney's General Office, so we've not fully reached agreement on this issue, so this is still under determination. For public outreach, this all began, the project began back in 2020. That's when we actually approved the IGA with ADOT to start the process, to do some preliminary work. It was in early 2021 that we made our visits to the various commissions. We reached out and attended a combined Bicycle Advisory and Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting in January of 2021. We followed that up with the Transportation Commission in February 2021. And both of these meetings, we kind of presented the different alternatives that were under consideration, and we worked through a decision matrix, evaluating the different alternatives that were presented versus the existing intersection. And then, finally, we finished that up with a trip back to City Council in February 2021, reviewed those alternatives again, walked through the results of the conversations we had previously had with those various commissions. And we had, and direction from council at that point was to proceed with the single roundabout design. And this, one important point here was that this required the acquisition of a single-family home on that, I guess, southeast corner of Lockett. Finally, we were back in front of City Council not that long ago, the beginning of April, to approve the IGA amendment number one with ADOT. This just updated scope, design scope, current estimated costs for construction, and also added in some additional city responsibilities during that construction phase. Just to remind you of what those alternatives were, this was the two round, or the double roundabout option that was considered. The primary reason that we wanted to present this was that it reduced impacts to any surrounding properties, right? It reduced, we didn't have to buy a single-family home. General consensus was that this was overly complicated and would be a bit of a bear to navigate. Ultimately, as I mentioned, the single roundabout, this is the design that we were given direction to proceed forward with, and we proceeded forward. As I mentioned, we worked through this decision matrix. At that time, we scored these alternatives based on multiple different factors, which included safety for all the different modes, whether it was bicycles, pedestrians, or vehicles, environmental factors, building and structures impacts, right-of-way needs, stakeholder feedback from the various outreach we had done already. And ultimately, the single roundabout was that preferred alternative identified by all of the commissions and councils that we interacted with. This is designed as it stands today. And if we were showing these side-by-side, really, all that's happened here are minor tweaks. So, we did hear the feedback related to bike and pedestrian facilities. We tried to improve those with striping and some other considerations there. We've been working with our stakeholders, our impacted property owners, to minimize impacts to their properties, so working with Pine Forest to see what we could do to save some of the trees that were on their property. Certainly, there's a very large one that's unavoidable, but there's another one that was on the edge. We were ultimately able to tweak the design to save that second tree, and then, working with the library and CCC on their property to mitigate the impacts to their parking lot as well. Here, I'm just going to talk about several different terms that have been out there, that people have been talking about. So, multi-lane roundabouts. Multi-lane roundabouts are multiple lanes into and through the roundabout. This is a much more challenging situation for bikes and pedestrians. There's multiple, multiple lane crossings that people have to cross and so on. This is really only preferred in situations where we are on an arterial, we've got high traffic volumes and so on. Turbo roundabouts, another term that you may have heard. And this is an alternative to a multi-lane roundabout, but this incorporates spiraling lanes. And what happens here is you actually have to select the lane that you want to use before you enter the roundabout, based on where you want to exit. Once you get into the roundabout, by use of curbs or some other thing to discourage the ability to change lanes while in the roundabout, you just follow the path that you're on, and you will eventually end up at the exit or where you would leave the roundabout. So, it restricts the lane changing when you're in it. This is primarily done to increase efficiency for vehicles. The Dutch Bicycle Priority Roundabout, or the Dutch Roundabout, what you're looking at here is that red circle around the outside. This is that separated circular bikeway. And the primary consideration here is that bikes and pedestrians have the right-of-way. So, vehicles must yield to any bikes and pedestrians in, within that bikeway. They've installed these throughout Europe in multiple different locations. And some of the data that they're seeing back at this point is that there's actually an increase in crashes related to this, compared to a more conventional roundabout design. Traffic circles. These aren't roundabouts. They're larger than roundabouts. This is one that's located in New York City. It's one of the most famous traffic circles of all time. This can have actual stop signs or traffic signals within that circle. And it's relatively large, and it has relatively high speeds. Protected intersections. This is a word we've all heard recently. This is a signalized intersection that offers separated and protected facilities for bikes and pedestrians. And it allows the ability to give priority crossings for bikes and pedestrians. So, we can allow bikes and pedestrians to actually complete or start their movements prior to vehicles being able to move forward. And it's an improvement on the traditional signalized intersection. Unfortunately, it doesn't offer any meaningful improvements to safety as it relates to car-versus-car crashes. It's still the cross-intersection, still subject to those type of T-bone or cross 90-degree crashes. Then, we have a short video talking about protected intersections. This is from San Luis Obispo.
...to a traditional intersection, except that it provides more separation and visibility between the different modes of travel. Since being in a car, on a bike, on foot, or in a wheelchair, each have their own unique needs. This is achieved by what are called corner islands. Corner islands help slow down automobile traffic at right turns, where it is particularly critical for safety. Corner islands also make those who are on a bike or on foot more visible, and decrease the distance for those walking or using a wheelchair to cross the intersection. For drivers, a protected intersection is very similar to a typical intersection. Look for people on bikes in the bike lane on your right-hand side, and expect to see bikes stop further up, where they can be better seen by drivers. When making a right turn, avoid the corner island curves, including mountable truck aprons, to help larger vehicles navigate a wider turn radius. Another thing to remember is to look out for pedestrians. Be sure to yield to them in the crosswalk, as you would at a typical intersection. Some people on bikes don't feel safe merging into traffic to make a left turn. A protected intersection is designed to make that a little bit easier. You can make a left turn by using the perimeter of the intersection, riding in a counterclockwise fashion, unless markings indicate otherwise. As you approach the intersection, stay in the bike lane until you reach the corner island. When the light is green, and it is safe to cross, ride in the bike lane to the corner island on the other side of the intersection. Then, turn your bike left and wait at the limit line, requesting a green light in the new direction. When the light is green, and it is safe, proceed in the bike lane through the intersection in the new direction. Be safe out there, and look for more protected intersections to come.
And finally, that brings us to modern roundabout, which is the roundabout that we're currently talking about with this project. It offers yield control at all entry points. So, anyone entering the roundabout has to yield to drivers already in the roundabout. It can be circular or non-circular, although circular is more common. And it relies on vehicle deflection. So, basically, geometry that will change how people drive, to slow people down, to improve sightlines, so that you can see other vehicles and you can see pedestrians. Pedestrians only have to cross one direction in one lane at a time. And then, finally, as I mentioned, that vehicle deflection allows for much lower speeds. So, typically, speeds are 15 to 20 miles an hour, driving through a roundabout designed appropriately. Then, we have another video from San Luis Obispo on roundabouts.
Hi, I'm Luke Schwartz with the City of Slow Public Works Department, and I'm here to tell you a little bit more about roundabouts. You may not know this, but roundabouts are the city's preferred form of intersection control. They help traffic flow more efficiently, with fewer stops, and less greenhouse gas emissions compared to a traffic signal or an always-stop. They're also great for pedestrian and bicycle safety, in that they slow speeds and reduce conflict points at crossings. And equally important, they reduce the potential for really severe collisions that can lead to injuries or fatalities on our streets. Roundabouts are just one way that our Transportation Department is supporting our city's climate action goals and Vision Zero policies through smarter transportation planning. To learn more, click on the link below this post. Hi, I'm Luke Schwartz.
Okay. Apparently, we needed to see it twice. Again, a modern roundabout should be considered anywhere that there's a traffic signal or stop control. So, this really, many communities, including San Luis Obispo, are moving towards this roundabouts-first policy, where a roundabout would be a preferred alternative, or preferred option for every intersection, at least as a first resort, and then, we would move down the list. For schools, its primary function is to reduce those vehicle speeds, and that is critical when it comes to safety. We can't reduce, we could reduce conflicts, but we cannot eliminate them. So, we also have to reduce speeds, because that's the critical factor in any sort of crash that we have, whether it be vehicles. Within corridors, this really is an opportunity to shape these cross-sections. We can beautify those center islands. And for this particular project, we do have beautification that we've been coordinating with, and there is plans to come in after the construction is complete, to beautify the roundabout, the center island. There's an opportunity along the retaining wall, along the MEMS frontage, to beautify this and make this a true gem for our city. And of course, this is used in intersections with existing high-crash severity and frequency patterns, and that's what ultimately qualified this project for this grant. I won't bore you with all of this stuff again, but there's some pretty significant safety benefits by way of reduced crashes, both for total crashes, vehicle crashes, pedestrians, and so on, for all modes of traffic. And the way this is accomplished is through multiple things. As we mentioned, one of them is speed. One of them is just reducing those conflicts. So, in a typical signalized intersection, we have 16 to 24 conflicts, as you're seeing on the left side. And this is, I'm sorry, this is pedestrian-to-vehicle conflicts, I should clarify. So, we typically, on a typical situation, would have 24 to 16 in a typical signalized intersection. A roundabout boils that down to only eight conflict points. Similarly, with vehicles, those conflict points are the same, in the sense that we can go from as many as 32, that you're seeing there on the left side, down to eight with the roundabout. To remind everyone, this is the existing conditions today. We've got quite a few challenges here. We don't have a lot of space. We've got an offset intersection. It's going to require some creativity to make any intersection work. Now, we'll just take a closer look at why roundabouts offer increased pedestrian safety. So, as we mentioned, the simple geometric design slows traffic down so that people just aren't going that fast at our pedestrian crossings. So, everything is done to slow. There's, you're trying to avoid the straight shots, the smooth, you know, to just be able to drive directly through, slowing things. This gives you more time for reaction. It reduces the severity if there is an incident, and is generally what we're attempting to do. The crosswalks operate like many other. These are generally, if we can, if we can achieve the single-lane roundabout, cross one lane at a time, and end or have refuge islands in the middle, where you can pay attention at one direction to one direction of traffic at a time. So, in here, if you were crossing from here, you only have to look back towards people exiting the roundabout. Once you're in the refuge island, you can reset and pay attention to traffic coming from the west. One other benefit of the geometric design is that this allows for good sightlines, from the pedestrians to the driver and vice versa. So, what this means is that all these crosswalks are, you're roughly crossing them at 90 degrees. So, anyone who comes out of a roundabout is, they have, they're coming out, and they have full view of what's happening in front of them. Signalized intersections are a challenge for right-hand turns. You know, you're looking this way to make sure everything's fine. There's a pedestrian over here, and so on. This really improves where you have to look, as far as where a pedestrian may be. And same with pedestrians. You are looking directly at the traffic that's coming at you. You can verify that they're coming to a stop before you enter that walkway. And then, finally, just from an operational standpoint, and also speed control, crosswalks are set back roughly one car length from the roundabout. This serves a couple of functions. One, this allows, like, so we'll look at northbound on 4th Street. A car can actually come up past the roundabout, or past the crosswalk, and pause here, and then, readjust and take account into what they have to do to get into, if there's an appropriate space. This allows space behind that vehicle for pedestrians to cross. So, if things do back up, there's still space for pedestrians to cross through. The other reason to place this on the downstream side is, if we look at our right-turn lane here, is that we don't want this too far away from the intersection, because as soon as you leave an intersection, people accelerate. And so, they're gaining speed that entire time. And so, we want to keep it close enough. We want them to have good visibility of those pedestrians, but we also don't want to give them too much time to get going too fast. So, it's a balancing act. Moving on to bicycles. The basics. Bicycle lanes end before you get to a roundabout, and bicyclists have two options, depending on their skill and comfort levels. Bicycles may utilize the on-ramp, or exit ramp off the road onto the multi-use path along the side, and act more as a pedestrian as they interact with the roundabout. Or they can choose to, if they have the skill level and the comfort, they can choose to take the lane. When bicyclists take the lane, it's always recommended that they fully take the lane, so they ride in the middle of that lane and not on the edge. On the edge, it may encourage people trying to pass them inappropriately. Once they get through the intersection as a pedestrian, there are the exit ramps that bring them back out onto the bike lanes on the other side of the intersection. For those of those, for those who use the actual roundabout, taking the lane, we provide symbols within those to help educate all users that this is to be expected and permitted. You've seen these on San Francisco and some other streets here, where we encourage lane use by bikes. Here, we just have two examples of how a user might operate here. So, this is a bicycle that's going northbound on 4th Street, and they're going to go eastbound on Lockett, and they're going to use that multi-use path. So, they're going to use the exit ramp, use that 10-foot-wide pathway, similar to a footstrail that goes around the outside of the roundabout, and go back onto the bike path as they exit the roundabout area. For our more advanced users, who would choose to take the lane, they would simply exit the bike lane when appropriate, and stay in that lane until the bike lane reappears on Lockett. So, you've seen this before. This is some conceptual bike lane or bicycle markings. The photo on the left is actually a protected intersection. So, this was something that wasn't in our original concept when we were here before, but has been incorporated now. On the right, this is an example of a roundabout with separated bicycle lanes. In our case, we are separating these by putting them up on the multi-use path, but it's still very similar in concept, as far as providing separated facilities. There's a parkway along much of the roundabout, not all of it. Provides comfort and safety for all of those users. And last but not least, we have our autobuses and truck operation. Roundabouts offer benefits for them as well, less overall delay. Certainly, there are operational trade-offs that need to be made with the number of lanes and that we have, both entering and exiting the roundabout. Ongoing operations and maintenance. We don't have signal cabinets. We don't have lights to burn out. We don't have the electrical components, so operations and maintenance can be significant saving over the life cycle of a roundabout. Then, approach roadways are also a benefit. We can actually reduce typically the number of lanes within a roundabout. One downside is that we typically need larger right-of-way at the, at the corners, just based on the geometry and the footprint. We also, as I mentioned, consider buses and work with NHTSA to ensure that this will work for their operations through this intersection. So, we make sure that everything fits appropriately. One final reminder of what that existing roundabout looks like. Of course, we've got several schools, and that brings us to our next topic, which is schools and roundabouts. I think we can all intuitively agree that children present special challenges as it relates to crossing streets safely, right? They are a little bit more impulsive, they might not walk as fast, they're not as large, they're easy to be seen, they may have less experience, and they're still developing some of those cognitive abilities to decide, is that space appropriate for me to go out there? And of course, they may also have that false perception that drivers can stop no matter There's a fair amount of research out there as it relates to roundabouts and schools, and in general, the primary thing that we want to achieve in the area of a school is reducing those speeds, right? So that has, we may not be able to fully mitigate the behavior of children crossing, but we can reduce that speed, and that makes a huge difference as to the outcome of what those instances may be. Single rain roundabout, single-lane roundabouts are important, particularly, which we have generally achieved here. We have a small portion that has two lanes. Back in 1990, there were no roundabouts near schools. Since then, we've installed over 160, or roundabouts near 160 schools, and to date, there have not been any serious, serious injuries reported in that. And unfortunately, people die in signalized intersections every day. A few more things to talk about. Pedestrian-actuated beacons. So the current plan, we did not have the opportunity at our last meeting when we looked at the IGA amendment to talk about any of the design details, but at that point, we had incorporated a pedestrian-actuated beacon on the southern leg of the roundabout. Primary reason for this is this is the only instance where we have to cross those multiple lanes, right? So that Fourth Street northbound approach, it's multiple lanes. And although it's not recommended for us to install flashers on all of the legs at this point, we do intend to install conduit through there so that we have the future ability, should we determine after construction that this is not meeting operational safety or comfort standards for the intersection, we will at least have that flexibility in the future. Another benefit of roundabouts is illumination. There are a lot of streetlights around a roundabout, so all of these crosswalks are well-lit. And then finally, one other design consideration are Z crossings, and this was an earlier concept where we had Z crossings incorporated. And the primary function here is that you make, it's not just a straight shot across, they have to turn and reevaluate, reset before they face the next level of traffic. It's not currently in the design that you've seen right now. I will note that the Lockett side there is probably, we're too constrained to be able to achieve a Z crossing on those, which is why it's not being shown here. And then finally, this all comes back to speed matters. So this is some of the, this is some of the facts on speed matters. So this relates to a vehicle striking a pedestrian, and this is related to the speed of the vehicle. So this isn't speed limit, but this is the speed of how fast that vehicle is going when that impact occurs. At 20 miles an hour, 15% fatalities. You can see this dramatically increases as we approach the 30, 45 mile an hour speeds that we would see at a signalized intersection. And finally, we understand that there's going to be a need for educational engagement when this project is completed, and so we will be reaching out to schools, to distribute flyers, to hold workshops. We will work with our public information director to get stuff out on social media to, to educate all users, the children in the area, bikers, vehicles, and so on. There will be an adjustment period as we wrap this project up. Next steps. I think you're all aware, we're kind of in the process of hopefully kicking off this right-of-way and temporary construction easement acquisition. That second read is scheduled for next week. Should the project move forward, we plan to hold a public information meeting at the East Flagstaff Library. We don't have the date certain at this point, but it will be mid to late August, so after schools are back in session and people are back into their normal routines. We'll be, assuming we move forward, we'll be working with Franchise Utilities to do their relocations. We'll be finalizing design and cost estimates, and prior to advertising the project, that's when the city will make their payment for whatever construction monies are due. Of course, any changes to the project that add additional costs, design scope, or construction costs changing would require us to come back to City Council to amend and update that IGA again. At this point, we're in a very tight schedule to still reach that 2023 construction season, but that's our goal at this point. And with that, I thank you all for your time. I know that was a lot that we just ran through, but I appreciate your time, and we are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some public participants, so I'll take them before we go to questions from council. And I do believe we have some online as well, but those in the room, we will start first with, beginning with Erica Morton.
Good evening. Do I think that this intersection can be made safe? Yes, absolutely. Do I feel that a roundabout is a safer solution? Not at all. I'm upset that this is the first time I've been hearing about this, maybe about a month or two ago. I just found that it was first proposed in the height of COVID in May of 2020, and I feel like a lot of people weren't aware of the situation of this intersection in the plan. So I feel like more people may have stepped up if they knew what was going on until recently. This is way over budget for first and foremost, too. I feel like it could be done in a, in a, in a less monetary way. There's three schools and a library in this intersection, and yes, some of the data has shown that it can be safe within a school zone, but were there three schools within that section with the data that was up there earlier? I'd like to know that. I don't feel like this roundabout will be safer. Certain areas, yes, sure, I bet roundabouts can be certainly safer. Not this one. The roundabout isn't even round, it's oval-shaped, which is very concerning to me, especially in that southwestern, or sorry, southeastern side, where it looks like it's just kind of like this. You don't have to have that 90-degree turn, so that's very concerning to me. Yes, I do believe that that intersection needs to be reduced in speed, maybe by putting in a 15 mile an hour speed limit sign there, like they do in front of MEMS and Puente, especially during high-traffic pedestrian, student hours. This is a high pedestrian-bicycle intersection all year round, not only with the schools, but in the summer, too, with the libraries, surrounding neighborhoods, Busmaster Park, North Country Healthcare, et cetera. I have lived off of this street for seven years. I live off Montavista Street. I have seen how this intersection is not always the safest. However, I feel like when I'm the safest is when I'm crossing with the beacons and the flashing lights. My kids go to Pine Forest School. I'm a teacher there. We cross that road on bikes and on foot all the time, and I feel like that beacon, the flashing lights, is the safest I've ever felt in trying to cross that street. I don't feel safe looking at this map. This is very scary to me. Another concern I have is the Lockett Road intersection with Patterson. As of now, that stop sign backs up without the roundabout. You put the roundabout in there, and it's going to back up that street and go into the roundabout. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Adrian Rhodey.
Good evening. My name's Adrian, and I am also concerned about the design of the current roundabout proposal. I've been studying it more recently since it's come to my attention because honestly, May of 2020, I don't think anyone was thinking about it. We were all trying to figure out if our kids were going to be at school or what life was turning into. So to give the citizens of our town more time, I feel like it is a fair request. Also, I have a petition with many people who are concerned, and I just got this this morning. So if I had more time, I would have, could have gotten many sheets. I know there was another design that was a perfect circle, and to me, that would be a lot safer because every corner would be sharper and every car would have to slow down at the same rate. With the oval, I feel like the two longer sides will be a lot faster, and kids might not be able to judge the timing of the cars. Also, I have spent several years on the corner of this intersection because of my work, and I would ask that the lower right-hand turn lane be removed because the quality of life of the students at Pine Forest will be extremely negatively impacted if you take out the grass area and the big tree that's right there, because we go out there every day, we eat lunch under the trees, and it's just kind of, just their quality and learning environment would be, be great, you know, very negatively impacted. So I think roundabouts are interesting. I think the circular one would be a lot better for everybody involved with this slower speed, and I think it was emphasized that a single-lane roundabout will be better. And I know that that double right-turn lane is single, but I feel like with kids crossing to one island, then the next island, then the next island, they're going to get really turned around whether they're supposed to look right or left, because I'm with the first grade, and they are learning right and left the whole year. So I just really feel like the timing of all this and the input from the community could be improved, and I am grateful that we all can agree that the safety of children comes first. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Next is Johanna Peyton.
I just wanted to reiterate the concerns I expressed at the last meeting, which is first and foremost, the safety of the children, and I know that you are taking that into consideration. But I also really want to express that once this roundabout goes in, cars will be passing through it for a fleeting moment during their day. We will be living in it. Cars will be whoring around closer to the building than they already are, and our green space is very precious to us, and we don't want to lose that. And as Adrian was saying, do we have to have two lanes coming off of Cedar? Do we have to have a special lane for the cars turning right? Children will have to stop three times to cross from Fourth Street or to cross Cedar Avenue going north or south on that side of the road, and expecting them to stop and wait three times, look in different directions, is a lot to ask. And I think it's valid, you know, that this has been going on during a pandemic when we were trying to just navigate teaching our students online, mitigation factors when they were to come back, what do we do if all of a sudden they have to go home because there's an outbreak? We have had the most difficult two years teaching, and I think every teacher would agree that these past two years have been a lot, and it's been a lot for our administrators, and people have been working overtime just trying to navigate what to do for the pandemic. And I just can't say it enough that we are there for hours a day, more waking hours than we are at home, most of us, and we can't move away from this. We can't move to a new school. We cannot relocate, and we'll be forced to have the foot traffic closer, which is a safety concern with pedestrians walking by. We already tell children, okay, if someone's coming down the sidewalk, let's move away from the fence. They're already aware of that, and so now that's going to be an even smaller area, and we use that area quite a bit. We use it for festivals on weekends, and I think if you would see how much joy the children feel, see the smiles on their faces when they're running around, this is our space, this is our home, and that tree is very important. And if you want this to be a gem, keep that tree there, keep our playground there. Show us that we're important, and let us keep our, our playground. We don't want to lose that corner. I don't really know what else to say. I'm just pleading from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Johanna. Cindy Rowe.
I'm the executive director there at Pine Forest, and I just wanted to thank Jeremy and Bryce, and I think it was Paul, maybe John, Jeff, for coming out and sort of showing me a little bit more. I'll just say one last thing. I'm still a tiny bit concerned about the one lane on Fourth onto Cedar. It seems like a short distance for kids, for a car to stop and kids running through. I'll say that. The next thing is about your budget, my budget. I know it's going to be hard to contemplate giving back over, you know, $500,000. Springtime, I'll just say that is our time for enrollment. So when we're tearing apart that, that area next year, I just want everybody to consider the impact that it will have on increasing our enrollment. We lost a lot of students during the pandemic. They're just starting to come back now. So as you're considering compensation for the areas, how does the city, how Pine Forest, if we move forward, create a beautiful wall there and a safety barrier so that we can attract enrollment to keep our school alive? Because budget, we are funded, charter school's different than district. We are our own little mini-district. We get per-student funding, and when that decreases, so does the school. When students decrease, we decrease. So just help us out in moving forward and thinking about how to help the community. We're established in 1995. We've been in Flagstaff a long time, so I appreciate all the good work that you all have been doing, and I appreciate their, their love of our school and the area. It is a beautiful little spot right there, and we want to stay alive and well at Pine Forest, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cindy. I'll have Bernadette Whistler.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I sent a letter to you, and I, I did want to read it again, but I, I want to say that I am supportive of roundabouts, and I think all of us are supportive of roundabouts. Where roundabouts can be effective and safe, and there are many roundabouts possibilities in Flagstaff that would work, but for this particular intersection, which is the most child-used intersection in the city, it may not be all roundabouts are equal. So I'd like us to consider that. We are in the business, we are, our work is with children, and we are going to speak out for their safety. When it was presented, the page about children's level of maturity and their ability to look and to rely upon their, we hope they, they look, we really know that we take our children to those crosswalks, we watch them. I believe if you have those crosswalks, you will need, or we will need, a crossing guards to make sure of their safety. But, let's see, I want to read this to you. Okay. We were told, at least it was my understanding, that this roundabout is presented to increase the flow of traffic. But if you have children walking, we have at least two times a day where there is heavy traffic flow and heavy child crossing flow, that is going to slow down the flow of traffic during the two times that the traffic is the heaviest, and so that seems self-defeating. So I think we need to look at that. And then, while roundabouts can be very fiction and effective, they, they just really, we need to care about our children as much as we care about traffic flow, and you cannot count on them, so I really want to reiterate that. The danger, the potential for danger for our children at Cedar and Fourth, not to mention the mention the inordinate expense of this project will cause great stress in our community and in our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette. Delaney Williams?
I am, hello, I'm Mayor and Council. I am a student at Puente de Hojo. I feel comfortable with the intersection as it is, but we could, instead of doing the roundabout, which I don't feel comfortable doing, we could, you could add the flashing lights, a protected intersection and, or just leave it how it is. I feel like, I feel comfortable how it is. And I cross it like every day in spring to get to my school. And if you, as Erica, I think, was saying, you, if you put the intersection, I mean, roundabout there, it's going to be, you're going to have to probably put a roundabout at the top of Patterson and Jameson, like, well, by Jameson. You, it would be, that's also in a neighborhood. So that might be a bit harder for students, like people to cross in the neighborhood if they're trying to walk around the neighborhood, like. It's just, I don't think it's a good idea personally, because I feel like it's not safe for students, because, I mean, if they cross it, if it's a roundabout, I mean, I don't know how a middle schooler would go across it, like. You have a whole bunch of middle schoolers and you don't know, like, they might not know how to navigate their way through the roundabout.
Thank you, Delaney. I really appreciate you coming and speaking your mind. Very courageous, thank you. All right, with that, we're out of cards for in-person, but ready to take online participants.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, we have Ms. Michelle James. Could you please unmute and address Mayor and Council?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Michelle James, Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. While roundabouts are known to reduce vehicle accidents because of reduced speed, there are pedestrians and bicyclists equally along with vehicles. This is the root of the concerns that have been raised by the public thus far about the proposed design of the roundabout, of this roundabout. Because this roundabout is adjacent to three schools, CCC and the Fourth Street City Library, some of the children that are crossing at this intersection are very young and may not be, make the best decisions about when to cross. As such, ped and bike safety must be given outweighed priority. My review of safety recommendations for roundabouts where people cross indicate that vehicles should be forced to slow down to 15 to 25 miles per hour. Given the concern related to schoolchildren crossing in this location, it seems prudent to design this roundabout entry speed at 15 miles per hour. Does the current design achieve this lower speed? I didn't hear that in the presentation. My review of the design indicates that the curvature from right turn entry into the roundabout may not be sharp enough to keep the speeds low. I'm not an engineer, but I'd like to know if this design forces cars to slow down enough that they will see and be able to stop if pedestrians are in the crosswalks, both the entry and the exit of the roundabout. Roundabouts in and of themselves are not known to be safety devices. Besides possible modification of the angles of the roundabout, the inclusion of speed table crosswalks, striping and signage, Z crossings, as well as high-intensity activated crosswalks or HAWCs would be a good idea at this roundabout, given the number of children crossing. These elements would provide guidance for pedestrians and visual cues to drivers in both directions at a crossing of where pedestrians are entering the roadway. Lighting that indicates when crossing is safe would be of paramount importance for younger children. How does the current roundabout design take into account the safety of cyclists? I see a slip lane that leads to the southbound Fourth Street. I see two lanes that are northbound on Fourth Street. Both of these elements leave me concerned for bicyclists who choose to ride with the traffic through the roundabout. How can the safety of cyclists be given higher priority in this design? Finally, I've heard community members express surprise and concern about the current design of this roundabout. I suggest that public outreach needs to occur earlier in the project phase, especially for transportation projects such as this, that impact many families both within the immediate proximity and further afield. I'm pleased to see the educational outreach is planned in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next online participant? Nope, that's, we're at it? All right. With that, I'm sure Jeremy, you're probably going to have to jump back up here, but we'll open it up to Council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who emailed, showed up tonight and spoke. We appreciate your comments and thoughts always. This intersection has always been a problem. I have been through this exact intersection countless times over the course of the last 10 years. My boys went to Puente de Hojo in Memes. To add to this, I just want to say I was an actual crossing guard for Thomas Elementary for years, so I know the importance of getting the kiddos safely across the street. As we move into this conversation, I want to remind all of us that we have traffic engineers who work at the city and who have been putting in countless hours on this project. Last time I checked, those of us sitting up here are not traffic engineers. And I am certain that none of us can say we are experts. What I can tell you is that our engineers live here, they have families here, and to assume that our staff that works hard for our community wouldn't have the interest of the kids, bike, ped, cars, I find it kind of offensive. We have engineering telling us that this is a good design to get us from point A to point B. We finally have funding and a chance to make this intersection better. I understand we are holding our children tight, especially after last week's event. This includes me. I believe it is our obligation to make sure we do everything possible to ensure this project is safe for everyone. I caution us not to make these important decisions without using the facts provided. I would like to figure out tonight how to come to a consensus moving this project forward, utilizing information from our staff who have professional knowledge on intersections and roundabouts. I look forward to a healthy discussion and hope that by the end of tonight, we can walk away with a much-needed and safe project. I do have questions, but I'm going to save them for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to repeat a phrase that Ms. Sweet just said. We want to do everything we can to make this intersection safe for all our children, or something, I'm paraphrasing. So, you know, I'm the liaison to the Transportation Commission, so I've attended all our meetings on this subject. I've attended meetings of the pedestrian committee and the bicycle committee. So I've thought about this a lot. And I made some drawings for myself over the weekend, which I can show if it becomes appropriate. One option is just leave that intersection the way it is. No. I thought that through. It's not a safe intersection. Going, you know, cars going straight, when they get a stoplight, that stops the traffic. But there's people still making left turns. That's a conflict point. So I do not support leaving that intersection the way it is. I do support the design that's shown on the screen, but I want to make a couple of little tweaks. I think that was your word, Jeremy, tweaks. That's a technical engineering term, right? Incidentally, excellent presentation. Thank you. The two things that I want to do, which I think are fairly minor, although they may require some minor redesign or tweaks. The one is that all of the crosswalks need to be what I think Jeremy called Z crossings. If you look at, let's see, I'm just a minute, I'm looking, well, none of these are. Jeremy, you want to kind of show us what a Z section is? Basically, what it means is on the top part up there, if you go across, you don't make a straight line across. You go to the middle and then you have to take a couple steps to the left or to the right. Why is that important? Kids, they're going to look and think it's safe and they're going to go, and they're going to go all the way across. What that little Z thing is, it makes them step into the middle thing, and there can be a little fence there so they can't run across. And it makes them kind of reevaluate the other lane. So in one case, you're looking at northbound cars, in the next case, you're looking at southbound cars. So that'll make the kids stop and reevaluate. And so I think it's important that all of the crossings be what Jeremy calls Z crossings. That may take a little bit more land, but it's important. The second change that I'd like to make is that I understand that some of the, particularly on the south part, south of the round thingy on Fourth Street, there is a stoplight. So if a pedestrian wants to come across, first of all, if there's no pedestrians, the cars just keep going, no problem. But if somebody on a bicycle or a pedestrian wants to cross, they push a button and they have to wait a minute until, you know, the traffic machine decides when to change the light. But what it'll be is there'll be a light that'll tell the cars, caution, there's pedestrians crossing, you need to stop. Now, we have those on Butler, we have one on Route 66, just west of where Barnes and Noble used to be. We have several of those around town and they work. So my suggestion is not just have that on several of the legs, have that on all of the lanes. And I made some drawings about how we would do that, but I may not need to show those. So what I'm saying is everywhere where pedestrians are going to cross a lane, and as you can see up there, there's one case where there's two lanes, but everything else is only one lane. I want to see a stop signal that is activated by a pedestrian, by a child or whatever. I think with those two tweaks, this will be a much safer intersection for pedestrians, bicycles and cars. It's essentially the same thing as what we see and what's been drawn, but we need to slightly tweak the design. And with those minor changes, I can be very supportive of this design. You know, there may be a little bit more cost, a little more rework, but I think it's minor compared to the cost of even one child being injured at that intersection. I think if we do this, this will be a model intersection that will be copied across the United States. So I think this gives us a chance to be a leader in safety. And someone said that the purpose of the roundabouts is to move more cars. No, that isn't why we're doing this project. The project was authorized for safety reasons. And with those two minor changes that I'm suggesting, I believe it would be an extremely safe intersection, child-compatible, and let's go with it. I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Could you speak, Jeremy, to the Z crossings at that location?
So we are a little constrained on the Lockett entrance and entry. So if you look at that, to accomplish a Z crossing, we would have to actually widen that center island. And by widening that, that exacerbates some of the conditions that we've already experienced, which that straightens out the travel path through, whether it's Lockett headed westbound or it's the right turn from North Fourth Street onto Lockett. So this one, so this was never shown as a Z crossing in that particular crossing, just because of those physical constraints, that if you move that, you'll straighten out those paths, that speeds up traffic and so on. So we want to keep speeds as low as possible. Clearly, this is an early concept that shows that we were able to accomplish the Z crossings at the three other crossings. We have talked to our designer and they haven't fully evaluated whether or not it changes the footprint. And the footprint is really the important part, right? So at this point, we approved the IGA amendment, which essentially allowed them to move forward to the next level of design, which is putting together all the legal exhibits and all the stuff that's needed to move into property acquisition. If we change any of the things that actually impacts the outside, like the property needs of an adjacent property, that's where we have to go back, we have to redesign the footprint. Like if we're working inside, we've got some flexibility. Outside there, where you have to redo legal descriptions, that changes the negotiations with property owners and sets us back from a scheduling standpoint, and there would be some additional fees. At this point, we don't know fully whether or not we can do those tweaks, but obviously this exhibit would indicate that this is likely that we could achieve Z crossings on the three legs, three legs that are shown.
Thank you, Jeremy. Councilmember Schmody?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeremy, for the excellent presentation. I really felt like you covered everything and you covered it in a very fair and open and honest way that I really just, really just wanted to say thank you. You covered all the different styles that, and I think you did it really well. I also want to thank you and Jeff and the team for engaging with the stakeholders and also engaging with me via email plenty. And Jeff, especially that last email you sent with all the resources, it definitely sent me on a deep dive on roundabouts. And I also want to express gratitude to MTJ Roundabout Engineering and Mark, I believe is the engineer there who's helped with this project. I reviewed their website and their previous work as well and even gave them a call. So that was really helpful. So I do have a list of questions and then some comments. I'm going to try to go through it fairly quickly. So can you talk about, Jeremy, do you know the cost for beacons at the four intersection legs?
I'm going to defer to our traffic engineer.
Good evening, Jeff Baumann. Didn't sound very loud. We have not evaluated the cost of beacons for all legs. We've kind of thrown some numbers around. We think it's adding to each leg roughly a quarter million dollars per leg, roughly. And again, the southern leg is already included in the project, that's part of the project. It would be the other three that we heard as a suggestion would be additional costs. But we haven't gone all the way through that, but that's a rough number that we've been...
Okay. And just to let everybody know, I did go back and review all the council meetings we've had on this topic and watched the videos. And it was really interesting to relive all of that and go through the agendas again. But, okay, Jeremy, thank you for that, Jeff. Jeremy, did you say that the two trees would be saved with the current plan?
No, one tree. So the very large ponderosa parkway unfortunately is well into the project. And we evaluated options to be able to save that, but there's not enough wiggle room there. There's an additional tree that was just kind of on the edge of the sidewalks and so on that was potentially impacted by some of the earlier designs. It's not a ponderosa, but it's also evergreen. And we were able to adjust slightly and to be able to save that tree.
Okay, thank you for that. And in going back into one of our older council meetings from 216, 2021, I saw in our packet that there were different options given for the single roundabout. And one was a single northbound lane roundabout, which basically equated into a single lane roundabout with that additional right-hand turn. You know, most, all the designs that you presented on and that I found online weren't this type of a roundabout. They were round and they were typically single lane. And one of the resources, Jeff, that you sent to me, which I so appreciated, was a website that specifically talked about roundabouts adjacent to schools. And it broke it down by elementary... And it broke it down by elementary, middle, high school and college. And I probably, I reviewed every roundabout on that website, which was probably about 30 of them, more or less, maybe a little bit less. But I think I saw a total of maybe three or four that were like Turbo-esque. Everything else was a single, simple lane roundabout. And I appreciate that. I think that makes a lot of sense. And so I guess my question is, Jeremy, can you speak about the pros and cons of that that option that MTJ Roundabout Engineering did for us? That shows basically the single northbound, single roundabout?
Well, Jeremy, I think we have the exhibit or something close to the exhibit. Yeah, so what MTJ did for us is an engineer's design report. And they worked through a lot of alternatives. They were initially labeled, you know, A, B, C, and then it went A, 1, 2, 3, B, 1, 2, 3. And so this is one, if it's just, just as a letter, this was one of the very early concepts. And this is typical for them to throw just a simple circle because that's the easiest thing to draw when you first get started. So that's a typical first exhibit. So this is the very first one they drew, which was a simple circle. You can see by the highlight, the highlight of this or the big issue with this one was it actually went through two houses. So off to the east, you can see the first house.
Jeff, sorry to interrupt. Could you make sure the microphone, just make sure people on the line can hear you? I want to make sure everyone hears you.
I always feel like I'm ducking a little too. Because, yeah. So the first alternative A, you can see, had two residential impacts. So the first house, which is an issue with all the roundabouts except for the two mini circles, the two small circles. And then it also ran into that second home as well. So that was a pretty big fatal flaw for that. As far as capacity, and maybe that's part of one of the, what you're looking for with that single lane northbound approach. Single lane northbound is an AM peak hour. So we looked at AM and PM peak hour as we typically do for analysis. And AM is the busier for northbound. And if I remember this correctly, that one went to level of service, took the intersection to level of service E, which of course, we're looking for A, B, C or D. And the queuing northbound was over 1,000 feet. So our queues in the morning would go past Greenlaw Lane or Roof Dancers. So that was the value of keeping this, because of course, Fourth Street's two lanes northbound today. So we have to merge to one to get to this intersection. So merging to one caused the 1,000-foot queue and the level of service E in the mornings.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm bummed to hear that this, that this project basically takes out two residentials because as you see, that locket coming into the circle is a lot more perpendicular to the center of that circle and makes a lot more sense to me, especially with it being a one-lane roundabout. And then my other question, Jeff, is if we were to remove that right-hand turn from Cedar onto Fourth, what is a consequence during peak hour again for that?
Similar, similar issue where the roundabout, you know, blows up, if you will. So that was a PM peak hour, so the opposite PM peak hour. And we ended up with level of service F for the intersection with a 1,500-foot queue, which takes you back through Main Street. So not quite to Little Caesar's, but closing in on Little Caesar's. That's a better reference for Main Street.
During peak, peak times.
Yeah, so that, remember, is an average afternoon, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay. And then my last question before I go into my comments. Jeremy, when you presented on the different roundabouts, when you show the Turbo roundabout option, which is this, I heard, I think, I think it was Councilman McCarthy who said that the Turbo is not prioritizing car efficiency, but it's done for safety. But what I heard, Jeremy, you say was that with the Turbo roundabout, it does prioritize, I wrote it down, primarily done to prioritize vehicle movement. Can you confirm that?
So I probably should have said it's more efficient for vehicles just because of how it's set up. You don't have as many conflicts and so on. You have to choose your lane, so you're reducing some of those things. So it's from an efficiency standpoint, it is more efficient for vehicles than a modern roundabout like what we have here.
Absolutely. Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear with council. This prioritizes efficiency for cars. Now, it does improve safety and comfort by reducing conflict points. But I think that's a really important nuance here in difference.
So just to clarify, this is a modern roundabout. This is not a Turbo roundabout. This doesn't have any features of a Turbo roundabout.
Oh, okay. I thought this was, I was under the impression this was a Turbo.
No, this is not a Turbo roundabout.
Okay, okay. So would you say this is less so to prioritize the movement or efficiency of cars?
Very much so.
Okay, good to, good to know. So here are my comments. I'll keep them brief. There's, there's many schools in that area from Pine Forest, which is a preschool, to Puente de Hojo, Thomas down the street, which are middle schools, and MEMS, along with Cocoa down the street. And, and I think that, you know, I know that's at the front of all of our minds on this design. In reviewing the MSA Roundabout Resources website, again, all the roundabouts that were adjacent to schools were very simple with one lane and, and really made it easy to navigate for the pedestrian. So I think that that's relevant for this discussion. I'm really interested in the single lane option, obviously. I think that makes the most sense to me personally. And I support the Z crossings. And I, and I heard staff say that locket would be difficult to do that. But I agree with Councilman McCarthy, we need that. So that case won't just run across that entire intersection. And then I guess my, my last comment is just that, you know, I think we, Jeff, you brought this up in the email, that maybe we can invite Mark, the lead engineer with MTJ Roundabout Engineering, to come and do some more education. I'm just so grateful for the education that is being brought forward to council in this community because if this is what we're heading towards in the future for Flagstaff, I just think it's really important that we're educated and we're informed and empowered so that the council can really work with our team, with the, with the experts, to make sure that this isn't just, you know, that this is best serving all, all populations. So council, I guess my comment really is that northbound, I'd like that for, that to be a single lane option. If that's not an option, then I think we need to just maybe adjust some of the angles from locket to Cedar. And even onto locket from Fourth Street, I think we can maybe potentially bump out some curbs, potentially to make it a little bit sharper, to slow traffic down a little bit further. Jeremy, I'm curious if that's something that can be considered moving forward? Or Jeff?
Jeremy's got these figured out really well, so I like when he gets to answer all the questions for me. So we've gone through a really extensive process with the roundabout design. I mean, as Jeremy said, there are some tweaks, but there's, and I'm not going to remember all, everything. And maybe Mark Johnson gave you a really good rundown. But, you know, he starts with a circle. And then in order to get the proper deflection for all the different legs, because we don't have a perfectly square intersection here, so the circle got turned into an egg. And then he's checking semi-trucks can get through. He's checking buses, you know, the city buses and the FUSD buses and regular vehicles. We're checking what they call fastest paths. So it's essentially what a race car would do. You know, it's going inside curb to outside curb and going as fast as it possibly can through. And we're trying to keep those down. That's that design speed that we're talking about, around 20. And we're balancing all approaches and exits for that 20 miles an hour or whatever it turns out to be. In this case, it's right around 20. I think the fastest one's 22, if you drove it like a race car. So it, it isn't really as simple as just bumping a curb out in one quadrant to slow something down because that likely means the truck can't get through. And we have that truck exhibit or the bus exhibit, I can't remember which one's on here, but it is tight. I mean, they're, it's a fairly conservative look, the way the computer models it, but it is pretty tight. And, and so I don't know that those tweaks are, are very easy to do at this point.
Okay, interesting. In talking to Mark, you know, I was very careful, you know, insensitive to the discussion that, you know, him and I were having and my role and his role. And he said, you know, with council and staff's support, he'd be happy to look into things further. But, you know, was very careful, like, and I was careful not to be giving any kind of direction. But what it seems like is the engineer who's responsible for this work was open to looking into it further with our direction and support. Maybe that's not fully accurate, I don't know.
I, I think it depends on what level. I mean, we, we feel really good about the design, the balance, the speeds. Like Jeremy was describing, the internal components like the Z crossings. Can we get it, well, we lost, we were on that exhibit, can we get some of those Z crossings back in? Because we had heard from cyclists that they didn't like them because it, they had to dismount or it was a tricky turn. So we're, we're balancing competing interests there as well. I, I guess I'm interested in what specifically you're, you're interested in. And we can, and we can definitely talk to Mark a little bit about it. But I just warn you that it, it's not simple. It's not like a signalized intersection where you can bump a curb and everything still works. It's, it's a fairly complex system of curves. As you can tell by looking at it, it's not a circle.
So I guess specifically, and I'll really try to wrap up here, is the on-ramp to locket from Fourth and then also from Cedar down Fourth. That corner is a little concerning to me. And I do wonder if we were to remove that right-hand turn lane, if that would preserve the, the land at Pine Forest? It would, yeah. So council, I'm supportive of that and us exploring that. I don't know if there's support by my colleagues to do that. But I personally don't feel comfortable with the current design and I have some concerns. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Shmuni. I'd like if you could maybe explain this whole like grade E, grade F, so that the public better understands exactly, you know, what that means, how we have to follow certain regulations and codes set forth, especially when we're getting outside dollars for a project. It's just important that we understand that we do everything based on codes.
Let's see if I can go fairly quick here. So when we're designing intersection or a segment of road, we are designing for priority standards for level of service A, B, C and D. And those basically levels, it's in most cases, and in an intersection, this is the case, level of service is in seconds of delay average per vehicle. So level of service A is the lowest end of delay, so zero to 10 seconds, 0 to 15, depends on what kind of intersection it is. And we get out to more delay. And level of service D is right about where we reach. The volume going into the intersection is getting really close to the capacity of the intersection. So when we keep an intersection at level of service D or better, we say, C, B or A, we don't run into issues where we have really excessive queuing. When we get to E and when we get to F, we've, the volume has exceeded the capacity of that system, whether it be a signal or a stop sign or a roundabout. And we get those really long queues and that's, and queues are, of course, the cars waiting in line at that intersection. We typically analyze for an AM peak period and a PM peak period, which are the typical morning rush hour and the typical afternoon rush hour. So, and that's what we did here. In some cases, we do noon as well, but this is not an area where we typically see big noon congestion. Is that a good enough overview?
Yes, and, and based on our city code and our codes that we are, it says in there, we have to be doing A, B, C or D with these types of projects. Is that correct?
Level service D or better is what we hold development to. And we always try to do the same or better with capital projects.
And this would also be the expectation of our partners such as ADOT in this project?
I, I think so. I think, I mean, they, yes, that is the same standard that they use. I don't know in this case if they would hold us to that standard. We've never had that discussion in this case. But it would be, that would be the typical standard and is our standard.
Okay, thank you, yeah. No, I appreciate it. I just, I just think it's important, when we're saying grades and so forth, that, yeah, we all are aware of what we're talking about here. So appreciate it. All right. Councilman Rassler.
Yeah, I'll weigh in here, but I'll keep it brief. This is definitely a revisited conversation, so I'll just touch upon some of these points here. I, I want to thank you, Jeremy and Jeff, for your patience and your generosity of spirit in revisiting these matters. It's important to do that. We've had more public engagement recently. And I think there's legitimacy to the frustration that this conversation happened during the throes of an early pandemic. And I think it's always important when prudent to be able to revisit these things. So kudos to the process and to the transparency of the process. You know, I, here's what I'll say. I, I, I fully support the modern roundabout concept. I believe some of these tweaks might be nice. I like the Z, the Z crossings. I hope we can get those in where we can. And I'm very satisfied by the fact, Jeremy, I think I heard you say that you're going to wire the entire intersection for beacons down the road if necessary, based off of ongoing assessments. And that's fantastic. That's, that's sufficient for me. That satisfies my need for the infrastructure in terms of safety and security of our children and our pedestrians. So thank you for that. I, I think what would be most prudent is to see how this is working and then we take advantage of that inlaid infrastructure as need arises at each leg of the intersection where it's, where it's been shown to be nice to put there. You know, and I just want to revisit this too. My daughter was hit by a car in this intersection when she was a student at MEMS. It was a teacher at Pine Forest School that helped her out. And I don't know if that teacher is in the room right now. Maybe each of you as teachers at Pine Forest have helped various students who have been nicked by cars in that intersection. But I just really appreciate the community coming to her aid in that moment and keeping her safe and showing her the respect and personal attention that she got, even though she wasn't one of your students. That speaks volumes to me. And it also tells me, it informs me very personally that this project has to happen. We've talked about whether or not this intersection can stay the same. There's obviously consensus around the table that something needs to change there. I don't have any skin in the game. I do like roundabouts, but, you know, I, I could, I, I'm, I'm really looking to the experts and the engineers to come up with the best solution. And I trust their good faith efforts to do so. And I trust their expertise. I trust their training, their schooling. I trust the entire community with which they interact in order to come up with the best design, given the various conflicting interests or not just conflicting interests, but multiple interests in, in any endeavor like this. I really hate to see that old growth tree disappear. And that breaks my heart. And I would ask our team to look at that one more time to see if they could save it. But I am certain that they have done all they can to try to come to that result. And it's just not feasible. But in, in the spirit of, of total prudence and good faith, if you could take another look, I don't know, maybe something will pop out at you a little different this time. I think it would be valuable to save that tree and more importantly, the grassy area of, of the school for the future. You know, it's, it's funny, we can't tear down the, I'm guessing the intersection looks the way it does because of the physical infrastructure at Mount Eldon Middle School. And no one's talking about tearing that down. So I, you know, let's give the tree the same fighting spirit that we, we give the corner of the building. And I, I say that slightly in jest, but I'm, I'm being serious too. So I'm already going on longer than I intended to. I do support the roundabout. I thank our city staff for their expertise and the care with which they're coming to this project. You have everybody's best interests in mind. And I applaud you for putting up with us cats up here as we try to figure this out and for enduring the, the, the messiness that is democracy when we have multiple stakeholders and concerned citizens exercising their right to weigh in on these things. At the end of the day, I, I trust your good faith efforts. I trust the expertise and I'm ready to move forward with this project. Also because we've already started down this road, pun intended. And we've approved the footprint. And it's, it just, with, with things the way they are right now, costs are running the increase. I just think it's really important for us to get moving. with with things the way they are right now, costs are running the increase, I just think it's really important for us to get moving on this as quickly as we can. And frankly, the this amenity needs to come to town as quickly as we can put it in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilmember McCarthy?
All right, thank you. I may kind of go back to my existing ideas. From what I'm hearing, that we could probably put in Z crossings, maybe not on Lockett, but on the other three, which I think we should do. The other thing I'll point out is everything I've read says that pedestrians and bicycles have the right of way in these. So if we put in signals to just enforce that right of way that they already own, it's not going to slow any traffic down. It's going to cost a little more money to put in some more lights. But I strongly support that. And Mr. Rasslin says he would be willing to say, well, let's put the conduit in and not build the lights for now. But I haven't heard the other council members take a position on that one way or the other, and I'm hoping that I that they do. If they don't, well, I'm only one vote.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember House?
Thank you. Thank you both for for the presentation tonight. This was very informative, and I've done a lot of reading over the past week or so, really getting caught up on this project and and trying to get a full grasp on it. So this presentation tonight was definitely very helpful for me. I also want to say thank you to all the the parents and the teachers, and especially the young person that came forward and spoke tonight. I think your voices are so important to this conversation. I don't have children of my own, but I began my career in education, working from kindergarten up through sixth grade. So hearing about the importance of this to our children is is certainly very important to me. One of the things that was said at the beginning of this presentation that really stood out to me was one of your opening statements that was saying that this project got started because of numerous strike fatalities in that area. That was the reason behind this, seeking the grant for this project. And I think that's something that's really important for us to keep in mind. So I'm certainly in agreement on trying to get those Z crossings back in. I also want to support the lighting of those. One of the things that was that stood out to me in in the presentation was, I think it initially said that that the flashing beacons were not warranted, but it was updated to say it was not recommended. I think putting those in really does emphasize the prioritization of those who are crossing. I think it adds an additional layer of safety for especially the young people that are crossing in those areas. So I'm definitely in support of doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Shoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the the conversation that we've had. I fully support us putting in not just the conduit, but those beacons. I know that comes with a cost, but, you know, I think that cost is worth it, and I would be happy to see that done upfront. And and that being said, you know, reading the tea leaves, this is the project we're moving forward with. I really thought that tonight we were going to have some alternatives and possibly even look at that single lane option, but we're not. So I just wanted to share, I will be voting no. I think this project is going to pass with majority support from council, but I still, you know, due to my my own concerns about safety, I will not support the recommendations of staff. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shoney.
Mayor, I believe Councilmember Salas has a C in the chat box.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to express my gratitude to everyone who showed up to speak up and and everyone who sent us emails. We, I think we all agree that safety of our children, of our residents, is our number one priority. And that's the main essence of this roundabout. It's intended to improve safety, safety, slow speeds, help avoid angle crashes, and add a crosswalk at the fourth leg of the intersection. And this project has been supported and identified in the Metro Plan Transportation Improvement Project, transportation project with ADOT and, of course, which was ratified in an intergovernmental agreement. So we have, as as the Vice Mayor has mentioned, we have experts, not only from the city, but from ADOT and Metro Plan, who are in, who have been the backbone of this project. And I believe that, you know, there there's some, there's some reservations and 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 a level of discomfort because of change. You know, as you know, we've heard time and again, change is the only constant in life as we embark on this project and as we as we educate and and reach out to every member of the community who will come across this roundabout. But I do believe, and I've mentioned this a while back, that our staff, who are also in conjunction with the work of consultants, they are the giants on which shoulders we stand on because they have the level of expertise, excellence, and professionalism that I'm very proud of to be as part of Team Flagstaff. I do, I do, I do support the the beacon. I understand, and I'm very mindful of the cost of of adding adding beacons for for the crosswalk to aid pedestrian bicyclists, especially our children. But with my role on Metro Plan and in that role, I am the newly elected Vice Chair of the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. I could advocate for more state and federal dollars for this project, but not now. But maybe eventually we can add more more features to this project to enhance the safety. So with that, I am articulating my full support for this project. And I thank staff, our partners with ADOT and Metro Plan, and the consultants. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Vice Mayor?
I just want to say thank you again to everyone and the presentation and staff and my colleagues for all of the questions and comments. I am in support of moving this forward, and I would like more information on the beacons. When I go through the one on Route 66, I don't know if it's just me, but sometimes I get confused and I see other cars going through with that beacon confused as well. So I would just like some more information on what that would look like and maybe some stats on doing all four, what would that enhance? And I'm not saying tonight, it could be in the future. But I can see, my initial thought was that they would be helpful, but there's got to be a reason why we only have the one in the project. So I do trust your your knowledge on that. And again, just thank you for everything and all of your information and to my colleagues. Thanks.
Yeah, do you want to jump in? Go ahead.
Sure, we have a little bit of information we can clarify. So we do have a couple of different devices around Flagstaff. Mostly, we have what's on the screen or something very similar. So these are rectangular rapid flashing beacons or circular rec- circular rapid flashing beacons. So RFBs or CRFBs, that's what's typically recommended at roundabouts, and that's what we're recommending initially on that southern leg, where where the practice is right now for roundabouts is when you have more than one lane on the approach, they're recommending something supplemental for the safety of the pedestrians. So it can either be these rapid flashing beacons or a raised crossing to ensure those really slow speeds. So that's why we are recommending them just on that south. It really only qualifies, if you will, for that approach on the south leg. The northbound, not on the southbound, but we thought it makes sense to have that complete crossing, have the the two beacons. So this is the type of beacon that we're talking about. And I'm and I'm hearing some consensus, I think. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm hearing some consensus. And all the way around, so this is what we'd be recommending. I'll stop there because I'm getting ahead of myself.
Oh, worries. I didn't, oh, if Ricky want to jump in?
And so the other device on Route 66, and we also have one on West Street, some people call HAWKS, they're also, which is, they're also, the proper name is pedestrian hybrid beacon, so PHB, but they're also called HAWKS, high intensity activated something or other. That comes from Tucson, the hawk term, but that's the red, the two red lights and the yellow. And they flat, right, they warn you like a traffic signal that it's about to change, and then they go steady red, so you stop. Once it goes steady red, then pedestrians, like at a traffic signal, see a walk sign with a countdown, and when you get into the countdown phase, and then the PHB starts blinking red, which means you can now go as a vehicle. You stop and then go if the pedestrians are clear. It is confusing for people. These, I think, are a little more intuitive and and typically less cost. But this is the recommendation for this situation. Those PHBs are going to be for bigger, faster streets typically. Hope that clarifies. The other thing, oh, oh, I'm good.
Well, just to piggyback on that, is is there a reason we're not considering elevated crosswalks in this particular? I know we normally don't like that because of snowplows, but has that been a part of any discussions or considerations to help slow down traffic?
We we did not. I I don't think we went through that in this location because they're, as you know, they're not preferred for snow plowing. These rectangular rapid flashing beacons, they're essentially doing the same thing, either the raised crossing or the beacons. And in this location, the designer led us towards these beacons, and that that's what we've been aiming towards instead of the raised crossing.
I was just thinking for costs associated, if that might be something that would reduce it from a quarter million dollars for some of the other lakes potentially, or? Yeah, because we're, as, you know, my comments, we're going to be around the beacons and so forth as well, which I'm appreciative that the conduit's in there. I'm just wondering if there's some lower cost options to ensure that we could have a similar impact, but do it with some concrete rather than a lot of electrical.
If there were no, and I don't know the answer, if there were no drainage impacts? Because you can't flow past those raised crossings, so you end up putting some underground infrastructure in for drainage. So it depends if it's cheaper or not.
Okay, thank you. That helps me think about it. All right, well, I'll just state, I'm I am in support of the Z crossings. With a lot of this, you know, I just want everyone to know, we we have been taking this very, very seriously since the very beginning. We have looked through over dozens of designs throughout this process. We have been deliberating, got the traffic studies, got more questions, more information from staff. These kinds of decisions aren't made lightly, and they're done through all, as you've heard from all of us up here, hours and hours of doing our, tens of, if not more hours, doing our own research before coming to conclusions, sending emails, like maybe just one or two to Baumann. But we we are really looking at what is the best way we can handle this situation. Is it perfect? No, but let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good. This is, as designed now, safer than current circumstances. That's data. That's, and I know a lot of changes, a lot of new things like roundabouts that have been coming into town that really make us have to kind of reconceive on how we are getting through intersections. But this is safer. And the fact is, too, amidst a lot of the restrict constraints that we have in building intersections based on code, based on the fact that we are getting the state and federal dollars that have certain expectations in it. But again, as stated, this came out of safety improvement dollars. We had to put together a proposal that was going to improve safety to even start this ball rolling. So I am in support of moving this forward as a roundabout with the the Z crossings. I would like to see what kind of additional funding opportunities externally we could find to help with those other pedestrian crossings because I would like to see these beacons across all four lengths of it. But $750,000 added on is a substantial amount of money. And we always have to think about, okay, 700, and is there some alternatives? Can we get alternative funding to address these or different types of designs? But in my mind, I'm, I think we need to be moving forward with this current design and then assess this additions. As stated, the conduit infrastructure will be there, and we can work on that in parallel to see if we can get additional improvements funded. I think Clifton, were you wanting to jump in there?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to interrupt the the flow of discussion at today's.
Just real briefly, I think we can get a refined estimate of the cost for adding the beacons. I mean, I respect that that was sort of a scientific guess, but it was a guess, and we could refine that and get a probably, my guess is it will be a lot less than that.
Thank you, Councilmember. May I respond, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Staff was anticipating this discussion, and so, yeah, that is not a refined estimate, but it is an estimate. And we've heard enough here to indicate that it might be quite worthwhile to have a follow-up discussion, not about the the design, but specifically focusing on the cost feasibility and and a deeper dive into the beacons at all four legs of the intersection. And and this is a a comment and a question for our engineers. I'm wondering and am hopeful that that discussion could occur without interrupting the overall schedule of the project. But it's an important one to council. I think it's an important one to the community. So just wondering if there's room to have a continued shortened discussion on that specific topic. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm not seeing too much interest on that, but maybe we can be adding that on to other.
I'm not sure what the question is. Are you asking for us to have a certain discussion tonight?
No, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. My suggestion was to have our engineers come back to you in the very near future to further the discussion on the beacons with with more analysis and and more precise cost estimates and possible funding strategies.
I would like to think that the council would be open-minded to at least a discussion on that. I am, of course.
Jeremy?
Thank you. I will offer that we will obviously have to go back to our design consultants and run past, you know, what the implications are for the project, whether or not we can incorporate all these things into our current footprint, what those impacts look like. Certainly, if there are impacts to design fees, like there's additional design involved, which I might expect there might be a little bit, that would trigger that need for another IGA amendment. So that would be another trip back to council to continue that conversation at that point, and that would provide that opportunity to have that conversation and to update the agreement and move the project forward.
Thank you. And if we are going to have that discussion, I would, I am curious about the elevated crosswalks and if we are going to have a discussion on it, I would really like to just kind of learn a little bit more of that as an option, or as you're saying, needing to put in stormwater drainage, and I'm like, I didn't even think about that in terms of the costs. So, yeah, I'd like to see what all options are at those crosswalks. Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Shoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I guess I'd just ask if if staff is open to this and council's open to this. When you do speak with the engineering firm, if you can ask them, if they were to design it for 15, do they see any easy tweaks that they can make to make it a little bit more slow of a moving of a moving intersection? Because I know we're designing for 20, and so, you know, I understand that council's given clear thumbs up on the current scope, but in the in the name of, in the sake of safety and and children, if we can at least ask them, is there anything else we can do to lessen the speed? I would definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
So I can offer a quick response to that. Our constraining factor, as you identi- Our constraining factor, as you identified originally, is kind of that locket connection. That's where our fastest speeds are occurring. And pretty much we're constrained without impacting this second residential structure here to the east. If we move this down a little bit, this straightens out this path. So for stuff coming up and turning onto locket, it straightens out that, and that gets faster. But we get better, slower speeds on locket, vice versa, the other way around. So this is really, as Jeff alluded to earlier, this is really about that balance, you know, iterative process to figure out, we adjust this and get this, to get the balance, get those speeds down to where they're appropriate and fit within guidelines and with the safety parameters. And as he mentioned, you know, our, our, our fastest lane analysis is still well within those guidelines. And that's fastest lane, right? So most, almost all users are really going to be in that fifteen, maybe twenty mile an hour speed range. Although, as you mentioned, those are the two fastest paths at the moment.
All right.
If I may, just for clarity's sake, I definitely heard, everybody's interested in hearing something back in the very near future on the beacons as the elevated crosswalks. Was that something that the council wanted to? I'm just, I didn't have in my notes the clarity on that, so.
Would others be interested in learning about that with the?
I think it'd be worth a, a brief analysis by staff and a discussion. It may or may not be practical, but I think staff can make a recommendation on that. I'd be interested.
And I would just say that I'm, I'm, I'm more, I don't think we need like an exact cost estimate for that type. I just want to learn more and get a general idea, not like the level of cost estimate and so forth with the beacons. So. That's, that's really what I was suggesting, not, yeah. Councilmember Shumani?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too support that conversation. My understanding is that it's not feasible and it doesn't make sense given snow. But I'd be happy for staff just to add that as a talking point to share with us. If it did make sense, definitely want to explore that. Thank you.
All right. Another thumbs up. All right, any further direction needed on this front before we take a small break? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Really appreciate all your work on this. With that, we are going to take just a, a short break. Yeah, six thirty-five. Let, yeah. Let's just, let's take ten minutes, six forty, make a quick pit stop, and then we can come back here to talk about the museum flooding and spruce wash updates. All right, sports fans. We all up and running live?
Yes, Mayor, we're good to go.
Excellent. We are down to Gen Item Twelve, museum flooding and spruce wash updates. Mr. Overton takes away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Scott Orton, Service and Public Works Director. With me, of course, I have our, our monthly friends that come to visit with us to talk everything related to the spruce wash in the museum post wildfire flooding. I did want to take a moment to also let you know, of course, we have, from our flood control district, the Administrator Lucina Andreandri should be on with us, either momentarily or as we speak. And then I did want to just take a moment to welcome Councilmember House to the dais, and thank you. You did spend a, a few hours with myself and Director Beckett in the field. We were able to go to the burn itself and then towards the top of the projects on the Forest Service parcels and toured down through the community, much like many of you have done. But it was really nice to have you out and get to show you a lot of the infrastructure needs and just the actual on-the-ground situation. So thank you for taking the time, and again, welcome. So this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about all things museum for the month of May. Remember, this is a high-level discussion. We'll be happy to take any of your questions or comments. Specifically this month, it's kind of unique. We're going to talk a lot about our volunteer efforts. People went out, got a slice of pizza, maybe had a hot dog, came out and joined us last Saturday to help clean that washout. We've got a couple more volunteer days, which we will highlight quickly towards the end of this presentation, so that you'll know about all the opportunities coming up before the monsoon season. We'll want to cover some more internal processes and some of our financial integration, as well as we might have a question or two about feasibility Phase Two, which is really going to be a topic for next month. But if it comes up, we might talk that through a little bit. We've got a pretty robust section on on-forest project work. This is the work that is being led by the County Flood Control District and is well underway to be delivered by July one in the next month. We're going to update you on the in-city projects and the progress, the things that will be delivered before monsoon season in the next month. And then Sarah will spend a fair amount of time talking about communication and all its important elements to the community. Amy Higgins first up tonight to talk about. This thing's being glitchy.
Maybe she just stopped.
I don't know what's.
I don't either. Keyboard's not working. Can you right-click and go backwards?
Yes.
There we go.
So right-click, everyone, for backwards and left-click for.
Keyboard. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Amy Hagan, Parks Manager and Interim Recreation Manager. So we held our first volunteer event last Saturday, as Scott mentioned, on May twenty-first. Some of the photos here just warmed my heart because it was a bunch of smiling faces and we all absolutely had a great time. Do want to give a special shout-out to Marissa Malloy in Sustainability and Stephen Thompson in Sustainability. They were amazing to work with there with my group, as the volunteer group, a part of this incident command team. And they blow me away daily with what they're able to package. So what we did on Saturday, the twenty-first, we did a large cleanup at Ponderosa Park, which is somewhat of a ground zero, just north of Killip Elementary, where we cleaned up some large debris. There were a handful of broken sandbags in the park grounds, and then started to work into the wash, that inlet, there's a, right there at the Royo Seco entry point. Large debris within spruce wash, a lot of Elms that were removed, a lot of lit, micro trash litter picking. It was a full day. Fourteen volunteers and fifty-seven hours of service were accomplished that day. And a lot of them were with some of our city coworkers, so it was just simply amazing. We'll go to the next slide so that later on in our presentation, our, is information regarding our upcoming volunteer events. So that was just a quick recap. Oh, come on. Now it doesn't want to go that way either.
Financial focus group. Rick, are you online with us?
I am, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Service Director. Yeah, our financial focus group has been meeting weekly for quite a while now, trying to determine the costs, both going into monsoon activities and what post or during an event may occur. Primarily been focused on the pre-monsoon actions that we've been taking. We've got a great list together of many tasks identified, at least twenty-five tasks related to pre-monsoon work we need to do to prep coming up to July and so forth. And so far, as, as we've gone through these tasks, we put some dollar miles to them. We're talking about whether this is a flood control district funding, whether it's stormwater or other funding sources that would be taken for this, for the color of money purposes. So far, we've identified that we're going to be investing on the city side, probably upward toward $350,000 in preparation costs, just going up until July or so. Our biggest impact, of course, is our stormwater fund. That's where we're going to try and charge most of these costs to, as these are flood-related activities. And so in order to do that, we're trying to create processes to track the expenses as we go forward, giving people opportunities to utilize work orders or project numbers and charging things out so we can track these. Our finance team is working with streets for those work orders and so forth, as well as other areas, to make sure we're capturing these costs and they're being applied to the right fund. So we're working through that. We're, we're very close to wrapping that piece up and going forward to the, the forward. What potential funding sources are we going to need if an actual flooding event occurs this summer? What are the activities that we're going to have and which ones need funding, funding resources? And so that's where we're going to take the spreadsheet up and, and go further and prepare for the, the next flooding event, which we hope is in four, five, six years. But we're going to prepare, plan financially where we may be for this year. So that's where we stand right now with the financial focus group, and we'll continue to meet weekly as we identify these costs. Thank you. And I will turn it over to Gary.
Aw, I screwed it up.
Thanks a lot, Gary.
There we go. All right. Now we're moving on to some of the resources that we've ordered over the last year, I suppose. We got funded for several pieces of equipment and other materials that you can see on this list. The first two on this list, funded by DFFM, are a combo vac truck. That allows us to clean out some of the culverts and the underground infrastructure that we have. That is currently being built, and we expect delivery around the end of August for that. The mini excavator and trailer, I don't have a timeline on that. That is ordered and on its way. The four digital portable message boards, those we have, and we started using some of those at the volunteer event a couple Saturdays ago. The two digital vehicle-mounted signboards, those are on order, yet to be delivered. We have the three light plants, those have been delivered, traffic barricades. I assume the traffic barricades are for just general traffic control during the event. And then sandbags and sandbag machine, the manual sandbag machine, those are also on order and waiting delivery of those. And then Cedar-Dorothy, I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Cameron, Project Manager with Capital Improvements. So our contractor, Tiffany Construction, has been moving quickly out in the field. They've worked several Saturdays over the past month to help expedite the schedule. The open channel grading in between Cedar and Dorothy is approaching half-done. And once that grading is complete, the shotcrete placement is scheduled for the week of June twentieth. The shoring is in place for the box structure across Dorothy, and those are the pictures you see there to the right. And the big news is that the floor of the inlet and the box culvert was poured today. So that was a big milestone for us. The walls of the box and the inlet will be formed next and probably poured the week of June thirteenth. And tentatively, we'll be looking at the week of July, the first week of July, for the lid of the box to be installed. So those are the highlights from the month of May. We'll continue to push forward, and thanks to the contractor, the engineer and, and city staff for working together to make this happen. So thank you.
Yeah, good work, Christine. I was out today, and project's looking really nice. Good work.
Great, thanks.
Killip School Regional Detention Basins. This project is in its final leg of development, which is a great milestone. We anticipate this to be done prior to July one, but it is looking like it's going to be the third week of June. And right now, both fields are at final grade. The weir structure is the center, almost, looks like, kind of like a levee or a, a dam, but that's not. It, it's more to control the water between the two ponds. It'll have a small sidewalk that goes across to the school from the street. Final slope and stabilization is now being installed. You can see those elements. The fencing was going in today. Landscaping is on site, and they've started to plant trees around the perimeter, so it's starting to look nice. The final costs are, are now being tabulated. We're kind of at that point. Adam Iole and the Public Works Group has done a great job of negotiating with the contractor and with FUSD. If you recall, this is their project. We are a partner in this project. And through that mechanism of the IGA, we have a proportionate share that we are responsible for. We did have some cost overruns in some rock work and some unexpected utility work, but Adam's done a great job of negotiating that rate down as low as possible, and our financial focus group is working on the means to get that wrapped up and buttoned up. And we'll report that out to you when we get that number finalized. But this project looks very, very good. I think at our next report, it will likely be a conclusion of the project. This will be the first fully completed project south of Dorothy in this area, so we're pretty excited about it. School District's been quite pleased, and the community's starting to see the results of the finished product. So again, good news on the front of Killip. I'm going to go back to Gary to discuss. Man, it is something.
We got this.
It's not that hard.
When I'm halfway through this slide, I'll start trying to go to the next one. All right. In order to take full advantage of the Killip Detention Basins, we need to get the water there. And that's what the, the Killip Inlet Project is for. So the Killip Inlet Project is a conveyance project from the, the north end of Arroyo Seco through Ponderosa Park into the Killip Detention Basins. And we did get, I'm going to forget the name of the grant, E and I. That's it. Environmental Infrastructure Grant Money in the amount of one and a half million dollars for that project. We have been trying to contact whoever runs that grant program to see when that funding would become available. And we're, we're having a hard time getting a response back, but we're working on what that guidance is going to look like for the timing of that funding. So the other aspect of that is getting the park cleaned up. We did a lot of that cleanup effort as part of the volunteer project a couple Saturdays ago. But we still need to remove a lot of the park equipment that's there. It's no longer in use. Parks doesn't want to use it anymore, right? All right, good. And Parks actually went out to bid or, or get proposals from local contractors to get that removed. We didn't get anybody interested in that. So we're, Parks and Public Works are working together to see if we can just have some city staff go out there and, and get the park cleaned up in preparation for this monsoon season. I'm trying to think if I missed anything else on that slide. Oh, we are working in conjunction with Parks on this design to incorporate the conveyance as part of the, some of the features of the park, to, to make those things work together. And that's, that's the overall goal. We're in a real conceptual stage of the design right now. We have a rough idea of what that design is going to look like, but want to make sure it works with the rest of the park and what the park was intended for. See, I told you I should have started. It's right there. There we go. Ponderosa Park barriers. So currently, we have a lot of barrier in Ponderosa Park, one, to protect head start, and two, to make sure that the, the water is getting conveyed where we want it or need it to go. There's a lot of extra barrier out there right now. We purchased that barrier from United Rentals. It was being used as part of the Killip Detention Basin project that the, that the contractor was using. And a lot of that excess barrier is being stored in the park right now. We're trying to get that removed in advance of the flood season or monsoon season. Let's hope it's not a flood season, excuse my language. And we're also exploring the option of purchasing additional barrier for the upcoming monsoon season as well. Currently, the city doesn't own any excess barrier in preparation for monsoon season. So we're looking at potentially purchasing that. I think that's all I have on Ponderosa Park barriers. Next, I have, Ed, I think I was going to let you cover this one. So, Ed.
Good evening. Is that evening? Yeah, Mayor and Council. Ed Schenk, Stormwater Manager. One quick slide here, just, we always have at least one 2021 response update. So we did have two related projects at the lower end of our flood area. So this is spruce wash just downstream of Route sixty-six that we were able to fix or clean up. Both were awarded to Kenny Construction. This photo has both projects actually in it. So in the background is that historic railroad trestle. The east side of that trestle had, filled with sediment, had about four feet of sediment in there. So Kenny Construction was able to remove that and regrade the channel. And then in the foreground is the Foot's Urban Trail Low Water Crossing. That had been damaged previously, and we were able to get a grant in 2019 from FEMA. Just to give you some idea of the speed of FEMA, we, we were awarded that in 2019. We got the funding this year. So that was for a little less than $20,000 for rearmoring the low-water crossing. So if you're looking at gray around the concrete, that is new routed, grouted riprap to help protect that concrete grade through there with some of the flows that we're seeing. that we're seeing. Um, and that's all I've got. I'm going to turn it back to Scott before we go to the county.
Thank you, Ed. These next pieces, uh, we're going to call on our friends from the Flood Control District. Um, I will tell you, we have had some fantastic progress in the last two months on Forest. And as Lucinda pulls up her camera, I just wanted to one, thank Andy Bertelson for his service at the city. He's now a Deputy County Manager at Coconino County. So um, we wish him the best, of course, in that role and will be close uh, as now he'll uh, be of course involved in their operations. But um, Lucinda, I'll let you report out on these. I know we have a number of pictures in the presentation, but all really good news on these projects on Forest. And uh, we were able to take Councilmember House to them last week. Uh, so she kind of saw them firsthand, but uh, it's remarkable of what's been done and the benefit that we'll receive on the sediment side, um, should we have some flooding events this summer. So um, congratulations on your new uh, Deputy County Manager and the success of these projects prior to season.
Thank you, Scott. Sorry for the, the voice. Um, struggling a little bit here with a sinus infection. Um, so things are progressing really well, as was noted earlier. Uh, the on Forest mitigation work is uh, progressing very well, ahead of schedule. Um, expecting to finish the, the West Tributary, uh, which for sure is the photo on the left. Um, it's got just a, a tremendous amount of rock, um, all of which what we don't use has to be reburied per the Forest Service. So um, that, that effort um, is expected to be done by July 1st. Um, down at the other end of the project, which is the Paradise Fan, uh, which is just above the city and below Locket Ranches. Um, that's moving very well. We expect that to be completed probably by the end of next week. Um, that's moving along very well. Um, also, the area, as I mentioned last time, the main tributary, uh, a, a portion of that, a fairly significant portion of that is closed to construction, uh, because that, that has been identified as owl, spotted owl habitat. And in fact, um, I think we do have some owls in the area. And so we completed a small portion of that that's outside the closure area, but the remainder of that will be constructed until uh, this coming fall. Uh, which we've known for quite some time that that was going to be um, delayed due to that closure. Uh, so again, all the on Forest project work is going very well, um, very smoothly. In terms of moving to private property, the um, the private property in Mount Eldon Estates, we've uh, constructed a number of low water crossings as well as some additional grade control through there to reduce sediment. And as the low water crossings also reduce sediment, because every time it floods through there, it washes out the road and all that sediment ends up downstream, let alone it takes um, a great deal of time to go back in and uh, provide for access uh, for those that live on the other side of the, of the access, uh, of the um, of the channels there. So it, that work is about 85% complete and we are expecting that uh, to be done within the next probably three weeks, uh, two to three weeks. Um, that should all be completed in Mount Eldon Estates. Uh, similarly, uh, the 40 acre parcel, um, which has both the grade control, that is complete. And the Louvio Fan work is nearing completion. Um, they're beginning to, what they call rip the surface, uh, to be able to reseed that and mulch it. And uh, looking at that being largely competed, completed probably by the end of next week. Um, so um, that's, that's the uh, the current status. Um, in terms of the Parkway Basins, again, uh, we're doing some additional work, looking at some potential options there for, for that project, but uh, still some work to do there before, uh, you know, coming back, as I mentioned last time, coming back to the council and um, having that discussion about, you know, but moving forward with that element. So um, so I think that wraps it up. In terms of the latest, again, things are moving very well and, and we're really pleased. Uh, uh, very typical work of Tiffany, Tiffany Construction, uh, put in a lot of weekends as they did on your project early on to be able to make sure that they would get this work completed in time. Um, and uh, fortunately, they're also assisting us with some work that's needed out in the tunnel fire area as well. So we're very appreciative of that. So, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. Again, all good news. And um, I think next month, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that we'll have a little more information on Parkway Basins as that project is being um, worked on by our engineering, uh, technical advisory committee and, and they're pushing that one as being the next project. Clearly will not be delivered before July 1, but it's moving. So uh, that's good news from our perspective. Thank you, Lucinda.
Apparently I can be sneaky at this size. So that's good. All right. Good morning, uh, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we'll go with that. Uh, so good afternoon. We'll start off with the siren system. Some of you may have seen or may be seeing uh, some really good progress with that. So today was the first day of installation for that siren system. I know we've gone through some updates, some of the progress of the project. Um, they did break ground this morning. They started at the Linda Vista site, then they moved down to Ponderosa Park due to waiting on a uh, traffic control piece getting put in play through their contractor on Cedar. Cedar's a uh, high volume road, so they're waiting to make sure everything's in place before they start breaking ground there. So you'll see the poles going up this week. You'll also see them coming back almost immediately afterward and start installing and building the siren arrays. They're going to do that on the ground and then crane everything into place. It's just an easier process for them. So a lot of good movement on that. We're hoping that within the next few weeks, I say two, maybe three, we'll be doing some onsite testing. I know there was some interest from council to come out and help support that operation. As soon as I get some locked in dates, I'll get that out to you all. And we'll work with Sean to make sure we get uh, that coordinated for anybody who wants to be a part of that effort. But we're excited that uh, we're in the right movement on that. And we see some really, really good progress this week out of that team. One of the big transitions you'll also hear about was we transitioned from uh, connected power from APS to solar. It was highly recommended from the vendor. We ran into some unique situations as we were trying to find that connection path to APS. And the best possible movement we had was to move it to a solar system, which I think is going to be probably beneficial in the long run for everybody. And uh, they're pretty excited about taking advantage of that opportunity here. County Emergency Management is finalizing the final steps for the integration into their software. As many of you all know, the system is really going to be ran through that emergency notification system. So I think it's always a shameless plug to remind everybody, if you haven't already, to sign up for the emergency notifications. Uh, you can find that through the county's website. There's even links on the city's website for the museum flood updates to get you back to the county website. Very simple process. Everything's confidential and truly beneficial, no matter what the event is, whether it was tunnel fire that just happened and they had to use the system numerous times that first day, which many of you probably saw or heard about, um, or any updates that might come out for flooding. So truly a key system and, and a huge piece of how this is going to operate this year. You've probably also seen Sarah's done a phenomenal job getting ahead of the communications on these, getting the information out there to the public. There's so many pieces to this as far as public education to understand what these are. You know, most people, even people traveling through are going to look at these and go, well, what, Flagstaff doesn't have tornadoes. Um, so getting the mindset, understanding that these are far beyond just uh, what the standardization is that people think of for sirens. This is truly to help support that flood area and getting the messaging out there is key. So I think, I want to thank Sarah uh, for all of her hard work on that. And again, last thing on that bullet is the update. It's coming. So hopefully we can get that to you as soon as possible for anybody who is interested in participating. Let's see.
Right is left and left is right. Uh, City Manager.
While we're scrolling through the slide deck, on the sirens, and this one I think goes to you, Sam, and also Sarah Langley, um, we have requests from the uh, residents out there to know well in advance when the testing is going to occur. I know there's going to be a lot of public outreach on this, but very specifically, uh, there are some residents who would like to know that the date and time of the first testing, uh, to take precautionary measures. Thanks.
No, and I appreciate the question. Uh, if you don't mind, I'll jump straight into it.
Yep.
So that should be coming out as soon as I know a date. You're going to see a whole new public uh, messaging piece come out on that. It's going to be in conjunction with the Flood Control District, so they can get their messaging out for the, for the notification system. And uh, but yeah, there's going to be a whole piece to that, just notifying people the test is coming, uh, what it's going to be, what they're going to hear, um, what are some of the procedures that are going to go around that. Obviously, there's going to be people rocking, walking around the community with vest on. What's the purpose? So there's going to be a whole piece to that as we push, push that out. Sarah's already been building it. Uh, I think it's a great question. Uh, but again, we want to make sure it's timely. So we're not sending it out now. And then three weeks from now, we're out testing. So we're going to try and line that up better uh, in conjunction with the actual testing time. So I hope that answers.
Yeah, thank you.
Any question? Yeah, of course. All right. Um, most importantly here is our 2022 refresh. Uh, many of you have heard us talk about this before, but it's uh, I've broken it down into two phases. Phase one was the Community Sandbag Placement Project, which was just getting pallets of sandbags out to the community so they were more readily available for community members. Sometimes it's tough to get them across town, uh, to go fill them, put them in the back of a vehicle, but if we could get them into the neighborhood, we've seen some good results out of that. Uh, last week alone was the first full week of phase one. They replaced almost 40 pallets of empty sandbags. So really good progress there. People are using them. That's exciting to hear. You know, we know we can't get to every single resident. So people who are helping themselves, helping each other, that's phenomenal. That's the word we're trying to get out there is if you need the help, let us know. We'll do as much as we can to get you what you need. Most importantly too, was a volunteer event. I won't speak too much to that because Amy really hit on that. Her team knocked it out of the park. Uh, Mayor, I really appreciate you being there as a volunteer. Just truly some good work that happened out there. Very excited. However, it's not over. This Saturday, we have our next volunteer event. This is where we get into that next level where we're supporting those residents who need service. Uh, those with uh, who are elderly or disabled and just can't do the work themselves. So our goal is to get out there, help them get their mitigations, emergency mitigations back up to par if they're degraded and uh, move forward on that. I do want to note that we uh, we're also starting to see some community members gather and support each other. There was a phenomenal event that happened over this past weekend. And I know that uh, City Manager hit on that earlier, but just a really good piece to see community, community members helping each other to get through these, these hard times. Um, it was just really impactful to see that. And we're going to do what we can to support them. And I want to thank my team and everybody who was involved to get that prepared uh, before this weekend. Again, this weekend's a big one. So you, there's a lot of a mitigation assessments that are going to be happening this week. The call center is up and running. I don't want to call it necessarily a call center, but we're calling it a service request line for preseason work. That is up and running. You can call it. We've got a handful of staff that that number rings to. You give them all your information, they enter it into the system, we're triaging them, getting them all prepared. So that way we have a nice uh, organized work schedule for our volunteer events and we can track and make sure we complete the work and follow through with uh, our promises. With that, uh, we've got about a month left in our preseason preparation. Our goal is to have most of this locked up before July 1. So we'll go back out into the community. We will start picking up phase one uh, right towards the end of June. Before July, we want to make sure we have everything clear out of the streets. And hopefully we have most of the community members, or if not all the community members who've called for service taken care of by then and truly be prepared for our monsoon season. But that's our goals for our 2022 refresh. With that, I'll hand it over to, looks like Amy. I'm not even going to try.
I'll try. Okay. We're clearly an entertaining team. Okay, the city is coordinating with United Way of Northern Arizona. We are coordinating an MOU with them, um, so that we can complete some of what the city will manage with these upcoming Volunteer Day events. Uh, as Sam mentioned, the service line is up and running and there's the number right there, 928-213-2102. It is, the line hours are 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. As Sam mentioned, we do have that line going to a handful of city coworkers to where they'll receive that voicemail and their email. So thank you also to our IT partners on helping us out with that. Let's talk upcoming volunteer events. So we have one this coming Saturday on June 4th. It is a refresh with the sandbag opportunity. We will be meeting at the King Street location and deploying based on those refresh opportunities that we've got lined out. So that will be occurring this Saturday. Uh, there is an online, uh, I believe through Survey Monkey, if I'm not mistaken, to register if you, if anyone wants to be a volunteer at that event. I will happily greet them that day there. And then our next one is two weeks after that on Saturday, June 18th with a very similar scope. And we're hoping to get additional volunteers on that day too. Do my magic?
Please.
You got it.
And Manager Clifton, I don't know if, did you want to take a moment to speak to the um, City Managers Challenge with city employees? I think it's timely. If you, if you feel it's appropriate, if not, we can come back.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Amy. I think it is appropriate. Uh, this has been mentioned uh, to, before, uh, and this is, has been a, a very strong collaboration with um, other members of the organization. Um, so we are uh, really promoting this with our employees to get out during these volunteer days and um, incentivizing the, uh, the importance of that community work with a, a contest to see if we can reach a certain number of hours, in which case uh, employees will be uh, rewarded with some paid time off. Um, that's, you know, very proportionate to the hours that are, are being worked. Uh, so we're doing our part to make this kind of fun, uh, and incentivizing it at the same time. It's not to suggest our employees need an incentive. I think there's a strong desire to, to do what they can to help the community, but it's um, it's a great effort to show that the administration is also backing this uh, in, in a way that could be a real positive for the employees. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important. And we saw a number of city employees attend our first event. And I think you'll see, um, as the word gets out, more activity from across divisions. Some people really don't have a lot of involvement with this. So it's good to see them out and giving us a hand and giving our residents and citizens a hand. So, you know, well done by the City of Flagstaff staff. We wanted to take a moment, this is a new slide this month, to discuss Emergency Operations Response. Um, this is an effort that Shannon Anderson has been leading, uh, with the help of Stacy BK. Uh, both are out this evening, but I will cover it on their behalf. Um, we all know that we're doing this prep work, um, with, with good intention and good thoughts, but we also need to prepare for what would likely be um, an inevitable response should we have a rain event. And uh, we want you to know that we have been preparing as well, not only um, in mitigation efforts and engineering work, but we are also preparing staff and operations for emergency response. And that involves a, a lot of divisions. It involves a lot of people. Um, we do work under the Incident Management Structure for Emergency Operations. Um, recently, we have uh, identified NACET and the King Street Facility as two uh, joint sites that could be utilized during uh, a response event. It is looking like uh, the EOC. If it were to be um, city stood up, it might be at the uh, Gemini Site. And if it were a county effort, which it would be a little larger scale, we're going to bring them in uh, during this type of an event that we had like last summer, uh, they might host it at King Street. But we also have an Incident Management Team, an IMT. And that's a much more operationally focused team, um, that is complementary and works hand in hand with our Emergency Operations Center. Uh, the IMT receives support from the EOC. And you're going to see that there are a number of staff members that serve on both the EOC and the IMT in various roles. Uh, we're likely going to spend a little more time on this next month as you might even meet some of the section chiefs and the way we break up an actual event. So you have a very clear understanding of what we do. And then you'll have a clear understanding of what you do as policymakers. There is a role for the understanding of what you do as policymakers. There is a role for the policy body within the EOC structure. But once an event were to start to occur, you'll see this move into place very, very quickly, and a lot of people move into action. And this has stood up quickly, but right now we are in the training stage with new staff that are new to the IMT or the EOC roles. We're identifying deputies that can serve when people are out or when we can backfill some positions. We learned last summer, seven straight weeks every single day for 12 hours is not sustainable. You just wear people out, and we need to find a way to make sure we're rotating operations staff in and our emergency personnel get a break from time to time. So we'll present more on this in the coming month, but it is important you know. These plans are underway, and they're moving along nicely. There's a couple more additional requests that Stacy has into the DFFM for some of the response needs that are likely going to be coming for mitigation, not mitigation, I'm sorry, assessment pieces. But we'll let her speak to that next month. So, real big piece of our operation, and it actually works well when it's organized, and I think we're in a really good spot based off of what we've seen in the last summer or two. The next slide before we get to your questions and comments and any public comment will be a communications slide presented by Sarah Langley.
Thank you, Scott, and good evening, Mayor and Council, Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. We've had quite a lot going on in terms of communications within the month of May. Towards the beginning of the month, we did several pieces related to the sandbag refresh effort that Sam covered. So that was putting the pallets and the dumpsters and everything out in the neighborhoods. That included a press release, an e-newsletter out to residents, of course, a lot of social media, and then also signage on the pallets themselves, thanks to Don Rodriguez for that great suggestion that she made at our previous meeting. We also did several rounds of communication for the Community Volunteer Days, which run May 21, and then the upcoming event on June 4. And again, a big thanks to Sustainability and PROS for all of their work on that. Another significant output that we had included the release of the Flood Risk Analysis Report, which was contracted by, or sorry, conducted by J.E. Fuller, contracted by the Flood Control District. So we sent out to residents, again as an e-newsletter, a short synopsis of that report. I believe the actual report is over 200 pages, I want to say. But we also included the link to that full report in case people want to give it a read. And then we included the updated two-inch flood depth maps that were updated based on the results of that report. So that communication went out this month. Most recently, we've communicated about the siren alerting system and let residents know that, you know, they'll be seeing construction and installation of that system. We also have a sub-page on our website where residents can go and hear the tones of the sirens to kind of familiarize themselves with those sounds. And then looking into the future, we have, of course, our third Volunteer Day on June 18. So we'll be doing some messaging about that. And we are also working on an educational piece about the importance of sediment reduction, so a lot of what the county's doing, and how that interacts with the infrastructure projects that the city is doing downstream, to highlight how those are really mutually dependent upon each other to be effective. And then lastly, I know that the Flood Control District is working on their 2022 Flood Guide, which is kind of a newspaper-like document that gets sent out to all residents in the area. And that has a lot of really crucial information prior to the season starting. So that's it from Communications. I know the group is happy to take any questions or comments you may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, a quick question, Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've heard myself that we are going to have a monsoon this summer, that it's going to come on schedule and be about average. I'm wondering if anybody here has any updates from reliable sources about just a weather forecast or the prognosis for the summer?
Yeah, excellent question. We have met with our National Weather Service friends, and it might actually be a good slide to add for next month, to get the latest update as we get closer to monsoons. We have the same intelligence that they said. We are going to look for an active monsoon season, average to above average. Still could be isolated, but I will tell you, I think they're at least signaling to us that it is not going to be a nonsoon season. It should be something. And I know it's very difficult for them to pinpoint. I don't want to put them on the spot, but I do think next month, very, very timely to just have them come and make a presentation of what their latest forecast is for July, and that's kind of our target, around the July 4 weekend. But they've also let us know that there could be some increased moisture in the late part of June. So, you know, we're keeping an eye on those things. We watch the weather reports. They're very good about getting us any intel as quickly as possible, but we certainly are starting to watch that forecast much more carefully as we're getting much closer to the season now.
Great. Well, given how dry it's been, I was a little surprised to be hearing that. It's nice to have the same information repeated. Gives it a little more credence. A great context to keep in mind as we roll into the summer here, could be an active monsoon season. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I think it's a great idea to have that as an extra slide next go-around. That'd be great. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Allison. And I would like to go to our public participant at this point. Don, you want to come up?
Thank you, Council, for this time. I have one question I would like answered at the end of the statement, and then a couple shorter ones, if you'd be so kind. Lucinda told us to ask our families for help. This will help you understand why we don't ask our families for help. This is the least aggressive part of my family. Don't you love graduations? When everybody comes to the house to visit? My husband's family accused me of being weak, stupid, and scared. They said the situation with the neighbor was corruption, and they didn't become citizens of the greatest country in the world to listen to our lies about how court is too expensive and justice isn't free. How could innocent people be punished for the neighbor's negligence and lies with video evidence nonetheless? They said whatever god you believe in must be punishing you for some past or private sin, because they refuse to believe that such disgusting injustice could ever happen to the only truly good people they have ever known. They believe in the god from the Bible, and that god is our creator. We told them that their god let his perfect, only begotten son die, so why should we be spared any kind of pain and expect to live perfect lives? We told them that this god makes us strong enough to compromise, and the blessings are the people, everybody here that we've met during this disaster. Thank you for your hard work, and the opportunity to learn from our experiences and fortify our faith. Next, they asked us what the city was doing in the alley, because it looks like they were building an alluvial fan in our backyard. They want me to ask you here and now why you would do this and not make the mouth of the drain at the road instead. I said I will be strong enough to ask this question, so that our situation gives everyone here today at this meeting and those watching the recording, the opportunity to do the right thing right with the right attitude. They laughed and said, if that doesn't work, God also gives you the right to sue. We said maybe, but that's hardly the best use of our time and energy. So please explain to my family watching why the city approves of building the alluvial fan in the alley behind our house instead of having the opening of the drain at the street on Dorthea. And just to be clear, I'm not trying to offend anyone. I'm not trying to flame conflict. There's still time to tweak it. They've done beautiful work. Thank you to Finney Construction, Max in particular, and Christie that's in charge of everything. You can still tweak it, right, the engineering term? So I'm 100% positive that an engineer didn't make this decision. So there's four criteria, right? So please explain which of the criteria and why. It's a legitimate question. We've heard so much about alluvial fans. There's, you know, it hits Linda Vista. We all saw that drone footage. That was wonderful. Cedar, boom, it spreads out. The west side, I grew up here, there's no place that I can think of where the, what they're doing in my backyard. So please, thank you.
Do you have any other subsequent questions you would want?
I did. I don't know. I didn't want to like distract you guys. I always talk too much, so.
Oh, it's okay.
I really wanted this one answered.
Certainly. Well, we can definitely have somebody come up.
But I can't. I do have good news. So, you know, with the sandbag situation, you put sandbags, you get sued. You don't put sandbags, you get sued. So what we've done is we fortified our door, and I would ask, I don't know, maybe it's too much, but maybe some engineers and firefighters. We flooded ourselves, and the water didn't come through our door. It's really an amazing design. And maybe we could do like an instructional video. I mean, of course, we can't say this is going to stop the flood, you know. But if we can get further testing on that, my husband and my kids worked that up, and we've tested it, preliminary, if we can make arrangements to do that. We'd like to share it with our community and help people build that for themselves. It's really cool. My son's 11. He could set it up himself.
Well, thank you, Don.
Yeah. And then I did have more questions, but I'd just really like to get that one out of the way.
Certainly. And then, as always, shoot us an email, and we're.
Okay. And if anybody wants to go by the house to look at the work they're doing or to look at the project that we've done, I'd welcome that, as always.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just feel it's appropriate. Don, I really appreciate the question. I know you had a number of them in there. I do not want to sound like I'm trying to dodge the question. I would like to understand it more clearly, and I would like to connect, Don, with our project manager, Christine Cameron, and our engineer firm that has designed that structure as SWI. I just feel like it's probably inappropriate if I try to answer those questions, and I want to make sure you get the right answer. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to make sure we get that answer. We can follow up with that result, so you are all aware. But I want to understand it well before we try to answer it on the fly, if that's okay.
I think that would be good to have an informed, yeah, response.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that time and the deference.
Yeah. Don, did you have a follow-up? You're welcome to.
I already got the answer from Christine, but obviously I don't explain things very well, because, I mean, you do, you understand, I guess nobody really understands what I'm talking about. And so if we can answer it here, though, and have somebody answer it maybe at the next meeting, just because I've already explained it. And, you know, like the traffic thing, I sat through that. That was an hour. And, you know, we asked to put confidence in our engineers. And I'll just share with you right now what she said, is that it has something, and I don't really understand it, it has something to do with there was a parking lot there before, so there has to be a parking lot when they leave. But it's an alluvial fan needs to be at the road. If they made a mistake in the 1950s and we have the opportunity to fix it now, I would think that we would, because if we don't, we're going to look incompetent.
Thank you, Don. And, yeah, I'd like to get further info as well on this, so appreciate you bringing it up. Any, Council, any other questions or anything regarding flood mitigation?
I do have one question, and this may be kind of a silly thing, but when I was at Ponderosa Park and looking at those concrete barriers that are going to get moved, and all the art from the kids all over head start, I was wondering, is there a way potentially we could allow, for example, art projects on those concrete barriers to kind of brighten up the park, allow, I don't know, even, and I know this is kind of superfluous to the major issue at hand, but I could just, you know, I was talking to a teacher at Killip saying, hey, well, you know, what if you have an art contest or something in August, September with all the kids, and you can paint the concrete barriers? And I just didn't even know if that was a possibility or not.
I think an excellent idea in learning from Gary Miller that we've purchased them versus rental certainly would play into that. But I believe that we've purchased the barriers, so it would be neat, I think, to do a contest regarding that and to help decorate the vision there.
Cool. Excellent. Well, I know that was, again, just kind of a side note to it, but it got me thinking when I was there on Saturday before last. So, thank you. Anything else? All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 13, Public Participation. We have one person online?
Yes, Mayor, if you give me just a quick second.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. We have Raymond Kim on the line. Mr. Kim, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you wish, and speak to Mayor and Council. Mr. Kim, I see that you are unmuted. Are you able to speak?
Raymond Kim, are you available to speak? Can you hear us?
Mayor, he is typing. Mr. Kim, are you able to hear us? We cannot hear you. Mr. Kim is able to hear us, but we are unable to hear him. I see him on screen. Mr. Kim, could you try your microphone again? Mr. Kim, under the more additional settings, you might have to change your device settings. It's the three dots at the top right-hand side. Device Settings is the second menu down. And we can still not hear you.
Oh, what about now? Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Please go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Sorry for the delay. My name is Raymond Kim. I'm a professor, Assistant Professor of Finance at NAU in the Business School. Yeah, and I guess I just kind of wanted to make a general statement about the housing situation. I don't know, you know, unfortunately, I've been wanting to talk at your meetings, but you're, on Tuesdays when I teach, and I couldn't, you know, now that school year is over, I can come in and kind of talk about it. Yeah, you know, after moving here from Southern California, it's actually more expensive here than where I moved from. You know, I got my PhD in Riverside right before coming. So it's actually more expensive here, you know, than where I moved from in Southern California. And, you know, when I speak with the real estate agents, they say about nine out of 10 buyers are, they're investors, you know, Airbnb investors, or just investors in general. And, you know, normally, it's about one out of four buyers, you know, in the rest of the country. But, you know, nine out of 10, that's a really, really high number. So, you know, I kind of looked into things more, and I understand that, you know, there might be a state law against preventing Airbnb investors, or, you know, it has to be done at a HOA level, you know. So, you know, I guess, you know, that was kind of one thing I wanted to just kind of address, you know. I mean, I'm a little bit more of a free-market kind of person, but I do see that, you know, there could be definitely, you know, this does look something like, you know, whether maybe to make it easier for HOAs to, you know, to be able to limit, you know, Airbnbs or maybe have city permits, licensing, you know. It'd also be great for hotel employment as well. But, yeah, nine out of 10, it just seems really, really high. And I guess also I've noticed that, you know, a lot of Navajo, you know, we're Northern, you know, we're Northern Arizona University, so, you know, a lot of Navajo, they actually work in Flagstaff. You know, they view Flagstaff as their kind of, you know, their main, you know, center for jobs and education university that's close to their reservation. I mean, we're closer than New Mexico State or University of New Mexico. And, you know, so, and it's, you know, they're priced out of here as well. And if you think about it, you know, what really affects the environment is actually driving. You know, Navajo, some of them, they drive 100, over 100 miles a day for their job here. I'm considering, you know, I mean, possibly if, you know, given the housing situation, I might move to Phoenix and commute from Phoenix to teach at NAU. I mean, I'll be adding hundreds of miles of driving as well. So when we think about the environment and the impact of more housing in Flagstaff, I think we're really leaving out the impact of driving a lot.
Thank you, Raymond. You're actually only allowed three minutes during general public participation. I really appreciate your comments, and just know as well if you have anything else that you want to tell us. You can go to council@flagstaffaz.gov. That's our email that will go to myself and the rest of Council. That's council@flagstaffaz.gov, so.
Yeah, thank you. I plan to come to more of these meetings, so I hope you guys don't get sick of me. Have a great day. Thank you. Have a great day. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Raymond. All right, with that, we're down to agenda item 14, information items, too, from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, future agenda item requests. And I will start, let's do, let's just do roll call order, if that works. So, Vice Mayor?
I guess that's me. All right, let's see. Last week, I traveled down to Phoenix, and I took a tour of the Carpenter's Union Training Facility. I was very fortunate to learn more about this union and the role they play in the workforce pipeline. And amazingly, the facility is very clean. I was impressed. Yeah. But learned a lot, and it's exciting. And I want to remind everyone, this Saturday, after you volunteer for the museum flood event, stop by Wheeler Park for Hullabaloo. It is a locals' music festival, and it is happening Saturday and Sunday. Super fun. Thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Rasslin?
Thank you. So I will probably, most likely not be on the Teams meeting next week. I will try to log in, but I will be off with my family somewhere, so we'll see, but just a heads up for everybody. I wanted to take just a quick minute, the City Manager is aware that I've spoken with our police chief, just briefly reflecting on the events in Uvalde last week. And I wanted, I don't know if this rises to a fair or not, but I wanted to just throw out the idea of creating some space here at the dais, for us to get an update from the Police Department on some of their protocols, and they've been doing a lot of trainings, a lot of good stuff happening behind the scenes. I think to the extent that it's prudent, we should create some space to make the public aware of those efforts and have just a conversation about guns and safety in our streets and in our schools, and just go over and review the way that the Police Department and our different parts of the city and our school district interact with each other. Some of that conversation may require executive session for security reasons, but mostly, I just want to provide space for the public to hear from our Chief of Police about the good things that we're doing and how we are reacting to this ever-worsening crisis. There were 14 mass shootings in the United States over Memorial Day weekend, and our community is never going to be immune to this stuff, and I just, I think it would be appropriate, maybe with a certain regularity, to get updates from the Police Department that the public can be privy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. Councilmember House?
Thank you. I had an opportunity last week to tour the High Country Humane, and it was a very nice visit with them and just seeing all the services that they offer. I got a chance to visit with a cat named Reba, and I think I had said last time that I was not going to fall in love, and that was a lie. She instantly stole my heart. She did not come home with me, but she definitely stole my heart, so they're doing a lot of good work out there. I also had a chance to attend the most recent Housing Commission meeting, where they elected a new Chair and Vice Chair, and I just want to note for them that they are still struggling to fill three seats on that commission, and it's creating some potential issues for them for reaching quorum. So if there are folks out there who know people who might be builders, developers, or residential multifamily or property management representatives, to help fill those three open seats, definitely consider applying for that. And then last thing for me is I'm going to be at a conference in San Diego from June 20th through 25th. There's a chance that I'll have to miss that meeting on the 21st because of some unmovable meeting requirements for me, but I'm going to try my best to make it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rouse. Councilwoman McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to mention that yesterday, there was a Memorial Day celebration, and that you, the mayor, and I both spoke and represented the council and thanked the public for coming, and it was a moving ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish the Coconial County Recovery Court graduates a big congratulations from myself for having their graduation, the second one, I believe, since COVID has begun tomorrow. And I look forward to attending those moving forward, and see you, Andrew, you're welcome to join me as always. And then the Transportation Commission's meeting tomorrow, 4:00 PM. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge that it's been a year since the bicycle crash with the Flagstaff Bike Party Group, and, yeah, just a lot of emotions and thoughts coming up as we reflect upon a year and what we've been able to achieve and what we still have yet to achieve in terms of creating a bicycle-friendly network in the city of Flagstaff. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Yes, I was going to mention the Coconial County Recovery Court is tomorrow. I did go to the first one, that's been held since the pandemic began, and I would just suggest each Councilmember, it happens once a month if you have the time, it's really a great thing to see, people who've worked really hard to change their lives around, and seeing the support from the completely packed courtroom of folks who, it's a really great thing to see. So I would just strongly urge you all to take that opportunity at some point in the near future. On Thursday, there is a Two-Spirit Day Conference at Twin Arrows that I'll be reading the Two-Spirit Proclamation for and attending part of. And again, I also urge, if you have the time for others, to come there, learn more. I know I'm learning a lot from my Two-Spirit friends, and that is a different way to think about things that has been opening my eyes quite a bit. Aside from that, we have tomorrow, Councilmember Solis and Vice Mayor are going to the assistance, visit with the Assistant Secretary of Economic Development at NACET to see what our operations are there, and that's pretty exciting to have such a dignitary. And aside from that, that's about all I got. Just on Friday, as a reminder, is the Wear Orange Event to prevent gun violence. As stated earlier, it is from 5:30 to 7:30. There is also a blood drive and recognition from 3:00 to 7:00 o'clock, same place at the county courthouse. And just so you know, gunshot victims need about 10 times more blood than a standard trauma. And with that, that's, so, if you can roll up your sleeves and donate, and if you've got O-positive blood especially, please come. There's a shortage. So aside from that, that's about it for this evening. Thank you for a good meeting, a long meeting, and have a good night.